All here and let's open. Oh, first I want to read the land acknowledgement. And then we will open with the Pledge of Allegiance. The land that Eureka rests on is known in the Wiat language as Jiro Gigi. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Eureka acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism. And could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Castellano.
Here.
Councilmember Molton.
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Bauer.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche.
Here.
Mayor Burgel.
Here. And would all who care to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, we had no closed session this evening, but we just had a great meeting about the Climate Action Plan. And you can watch that meeting on our website or YouTube. So it was a lot of great information. So we will open this up with their first proclamation, Constitution Week, with Councilmember Contreras Deloche.
Whereas September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four marks the two hundred and thirty-seventh anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, thereby laying the groundwork for our system of government today, and whereas this extraordinary document has served our country through centuries of change and growth and has served as a model for democratic governments around the world. And whereas public law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitution Week, and whereas this action reminds us to recognize the importance of active, responsible citizenship in preserving our Constitution, to understand the historic relevance of the Constitution's role on our lives today and to ensure that the vast benefits of American liberty endure and extend for many generations to come. Now, therefore, I, Renee Contreras Deloche, on behalf of Mayor Kim Burgel and the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth through twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, as Constitution Week in the city of Eureka, California, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of our Constitution.
Thank you. And for my mayor's reports, I have a couple of things I want to discuss. First, and probably most importantly, I want to talk about the importance of decorum in a meeting. Decorum is important, I'm reading now, because it helps to create a more civilized society by encouraging respectful communication and interactions. Maintaining decorum gives room for thoughtful and measured responses in a world that often values quick reactions over careful thinking. And in this meeting, we asked people not to clap, and the reason we do that is so that everybody feels safe and comfortable when they speak. That being said, last meeting, I was caught up in the moment, and I clapped during public comment for a woman here. She was here for Celebrate Recovery, or, excuse me, Recovery Happens. And she had announced that she had twenty-nine years of clean and sober off drugs and alcohol. And so I clapped for her. My behavior in this setting was inappropriate. I'm acknowledging that now. It doesn't make it right, but I am acknowledging that. And I just want to be clear that decorum rules still apply while we're in chambers and during public comment. So I appreciate your consideration over this matter. It is certainly important so that we all feel like we have our three minutes without intimidation or feeling uncomfortable. So there's that. I attended and gave the welcome at Recovery Happens at Sequoia Park last two weekends ago. It was incredibly well-attended. There were, it was great to see friends and family. A lot of families, a lot of kids, you know, on the bounce house, doing all kinds of things, enjoying themselves, and there were a lot of tabling from a lot of agencies. And the gift of that is that people do, as the lady said a couple of weeks ago, people do recover. And I think sometimes it's really easy for me, like when I'm out in the world and I'm walking wherever and I'm seeing folks out and I'm feeling powerless over their behaviors, to go, you know, God, you know, what the heck? People don't get better. But people do. People do. And I think it's really important that we remind ourselves of that on some occasions because, you know, we're all in this together. We're a community, and it's important for us to treat each other with respect and dignity. Let's see, I also gave a welcome talk this morning at the Eureka Main Street Conference. So this conference, so our Eureka Main Street is down Old Town Downtown. It's forty-nine blocks. And this conference brought forward people from all over California. It was pretty exciting to have these people here and to have these conversations and discussions. And then lastly, and maybe the hardest for me, is I wanted to to take a moment to honor Humboldt County social activist Holly Klingel. Many of you may remember her from council meetings. She would come and she would sit, and sometimes she would have outbursts. But that was okay. Well, it really wasn't okay, but she was very sweet. And I just wanted to read kind of a tribute to her, just briefly, because she she was such an incredible woman and had such struggles and hardships. So this is actually something that I'm reading that was reposted from a friend of mine who also knew her. And it says, you know, he says, "With a sad heart, I have learned that Humboldt County social activist Holly Klingel has passed from an infection." Many of you may remember her. I believe she was eighty-one. Holly either wrote or called me many times, and she was always sincere with her observations. This person was a basketball referee at her granddaughter's Fernando High School basketball games, and she was even positive about that. She was a commissioner on the Humboldt County Human Rights Commission. She was a member of the National Alliance of Mental Illness and a member of the North Coast Peoples Alliance. This is the part I love about her. She's classic. She's eighty-one years old. She was arrested in twenty-fourteen as a homeless advocate. She was a conscientious objector when we cleared out Palco Marsh. And she was on earth definitely to help her community. And Godspeed, Holly. She will be missed. She was a real gift to our community. So I just wanted to take a brief moment to honor her. And with that, we will move on to public comment.
Sorry, we're at presentations, Mayor.
Presentations, exactly. That's what I want to move on to. So we're having part one of Neighborhood Character Series Legacy of R1 Zoning in Eureka.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
This is in response to a future agenda item request that council made at their August sixth meeting to learn more about the history of single-family zoning and its effect on the city of Eureka. It also, I think, is really helpful and necessary context going into our discussions about neighborhood character and design review. And it is kind of a logical extension of the city's work with Frogbreak over the last couple of years. The city governments wield a lot of power with our land use and zoning regulations. So it's great to take time to reflect on those regulations and how they align with our mission, vision, and values as a city. So the presentation will be given by Gorav Srivastava, who is the Urban Design Director for the consulting firm Dudek that we've been working with on some of our neighborhood efforts. He's also an instructor at UCLA's Leskin School of Public Affairs and much more of an expert on this topic than I am. So I really am thankful to have him here today to share his knowledge with us, and he's going to present via Zoom. So Gorav, go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Christian, for that introduction. Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Gorav Srivastava, and as Christian said, I work for Dudek. I'm a urban designer. I'm trained as an architect and a city planner, and I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to address all of you today. Just by way of additional background, I was part of the Dudek team that previously supported Christian and planning staff in the preparation of the waterfront specific plan. And as Christian said, I also teach at UCLA. I teach urban design for graduate students. And while wearing my practitioner's hat today, I will also be wearing my academic. So today's presentation is about single-family only zoning, or in other words, residential zoning that disallows the development of more than one home on a single parcel. It's a land use policy that is prevalent in cities across the United States, and especially unique to North American cities in the U.S. and Canada as a tool to shape cities. There are three parts to today's presentation. First, we'll discuss the history and origins of single-family only zoning over the last hundred years or so, what its original objectives were as a planning tool, what its outcomes were then and today. Second, we will discuss the corresponding evolution of land use and zoning within Eureka, within that same hundred-year timeframe. And finally, review some case studies of cities that are or have recently undertaken approaches to evolve their single-family only zoning and why. But before I get started, and just so I don't bury the lead, at the outset, let me state that thesis of this entire presentation is that planning, as we know today, especially single-family only residential zoning, originally emerged from policy objectives that were intentionally racist and segregationist. And a good place to start that discussion is with the Great Migration of the early twentieth century. So this was the migration that saw black families from primarily the American South migrate to cities across the United States. It's a historical marker in the evolution of the American city. Between nineteen fifteen and nineteen seventy, about six million black Americans moved out of the South to cities in the Northeast, Midwest, and the West. The cities that they migrated to were predominantly white, and in the early nineteen hundreds, the residents of these cities reacted in predictable ways. And that reaction was essentially a backlash against differently colored Americans coming to decide in their cities. A policy objective of city elites then was to segregate the newcomers from the predominantly white neighborhoods of these cities. And this policy objective was implemented through very explicitly racial zoning. So a hundred years ago, cities like Baltimore, St. Louis, which are just two examples that are on this slide, were able to utilize explicitly racial language in their municipal code to craft ordinances to enforce segregation. And I just want to note that it is no accident that the explosion of zoning ordinances and the emergence of planning as a profession in the early nineteen hundreds, nineteen ten, nineteen twenties, coincided with the early years of the Great Migration. However, in nineteen seventeen, the United States Supreme Court made racially explicit zoning or language that referred to race in municipal codes illegal. So at that time, the policy objective of enforcing segregation shifted from the public sector or from public policy to private parties. And this was primarily through racial components and property deeds that made it illegal for black Americans to buy in places where white Americans lived. And as one can imagine, these restrictions, while they always applied to black Americans, they were often extended to include Jews, Asians, and other non-white races and ethnicities. After racial zoning was made illegal in nineteen seventeen, cities at that time still had the same policy objectives. So they found workarounds on how to achieve those segregationist objectives. So Atlanta in nineteen twenty-two is a good example of what workarounds cities employed to achieve segregationist policy objectives, while also providing a glimpse into the etymology of R1 zoning. So as we all know, R1 zoning is now the universally accepted shorthand for single-family only zoning. The city of Atlanta in nineteen twenty-two created a plan that shows the direct linkage between racial segregation of then to the R1 zones that ostensibly are race-neutral that we still continue to use. So in the nineteen twenty-two plan, the city of Atlanta defined R1, which was probably the first reference to R1 zoning in the country. R1 was defined as areas of the city in Atlanta that were meant for white-only residents. R2 was defined as areas in the city for residents of color only. And R3 was a catch-all category for undetermined races. So this was nineteen twenty-two, and this was already after the Supreme Court had disallowed racial zoning in municipal codes. So the city of Atlanta was, knew what it was doing. It wanted to test what was constitutional or not. But sure enough, in nineteen twenty-four, it had to revise its nineteen twenty-two plan, but it already had a fix in place. And the fix was it conveniently redefined R1, which was white-only zoning, to the Dwelling House District, and these were a residential district where apartment buildings were not allowed. R2, which was the black-only district, became the Apartment House District or multifamily districts. So what was clear then in nineteen twenty-two was the use of class and income as a proxy for segregationist policy objectives. And cities across the country, and yes, including Eureka, continue to use the system of R1 zone nomenclature. And they're almost always oblivious of how it came about and what its original intent was. Another revealing episode in this early history of planning is the Supreme Court case Euclid versus Ambler of nineteen twenty-six. So for us planning nerds, this is the seminal case that upheld the constitutionality of local governments' ability to use land use and zoning to shape their cities. So the case between Ambler Realty, who was a property owner in the village of Euclid, centered around the use of zoning regulations on Ambler's property by the village of Euclid. The property owner argued before Supreme Court that these zoning regulations limited its development potential, particularly one that disallowed apartment buildings on its sixty-eight acre lot. And we now know that Euclid, the village of Euclid, won at the Supreme Court, and every land use policy and zoning regulation in the country can now trace its origin to that court case. But what is interesting is the words and quotes in the majority opinion of the Supreme Court in nineteen twenty-six. And I'll read these without comment because you'll see that there's no comment necessary. So, quote, and this is from the Supreme Court majority opinion. "The apartment house is a mere parasite constructed in order to take advantage of the open spaces and attractive surroundings." And then continuing on discussing after the apartment buildings are built, quote, "The residential character of the neighborhood and its desirability as a place of detached residences are utterly destroyed." What was interesting is that two years previously, in nineteen twenty-four, the same case was before the U.S. District Court Northern High. And for that case, obviously, the property owner won, which is why Euclid then went to the Supreme Court. But the point of view of the justices of the District Court was markedly different. And one which perhaps recognized the inherent discrimination embedded in Euclid's approach. So again, I'm going to read their comments. Quote, "The purpose to be accomplished is really to regulate the mode of living, to classify the population and segregate them according to their income or situation in life." And these were in reference to the ban on developing multifamily or apartment buildings within that particular lot. So again, in the early nineteen twenties and nineteen thirties, while cities were testing through court cases what may or may not be constitutional with regards to zoning, separately, the federal government was putting in place financial infrastructure to facilitate homeownership. In nineteen thirty-three, Congress established the Homeowner Loan Corporation, or H O L C. This was one of Roosevelt's New Deal initiatives to stabilize the housing market during the Great Depression. But it's, as you will see from these maps on the slide, its infamous legacy is our redlining maps. So these were, quote-unquote, residential security maps created by the H O L C to determine mortgage risk. And the premise underlying these maps was that racially homogeneous neighborhoods made mortgages less risky, especially if those neighborhoods were homogeneously white. So the maps that were created used four color categories with A being best and D being hazardous, and A aligned always with white neighborhoods and D with black neighborhoods. It was always easier and cheaper to get a mortgage or to refinance a mortgage if you lived in a green neighborhood. And it was almost always impossible to get a mortgage if you lived in a red neighborhood. And again, green aligned with white neighborhoods, red aligned with black neighborhoods. So the legacy of these redlining maps and H O L C, and it's still felt today, was to create federally subsidized racially homogeneous neighborhoods that were allowed to build intergenerational wealth for residents if they happened to live in a white neighborhood, and deny that opportunity for wealth creation and generation if you happened to live in the other neighborhoods, and especially if you happened to live in a black neighborhood. In our research, we found an interesting role that the city of Eureka played in these planning dynamics in the first half of the twentieth century. So in nineteen fifty, California voters approved Prop Ten, which is now enshrined as Article Thirty-four of the state constitution. And what Article Thirty-four states, which is, and it's still in place today, is that if a public entity proposes to develop low-income housing in any jurisdiction, then that proposal has to be approved by the voters of that jurisdiction. The intent was to clearly create barriers to creating low-income housing across cities in California. And it stemmed from a nineteen forty-nine proposal in Eureka to develop five hundred units of low-income housing by the Eureka Housing Authority. Local opposition then led to it becoming a statewide issue, and eventually this issue made it to the ballot, and it was approved by California voters by a slim margin, and it's still in place. Nineteen sixty-eight is a significant year in planning discourse, and especially housing policy discourse. The Fair Housing Act was passed in nineteen sixty-eight, and this finally banned racial discrimination in the sale, rental, financing of housing. But this happened only decades after where wealth was allowed to accumulate in white neighborhoods through redlining programs and where local jurisdictions actively used the available tools they had to segregate initially by race and then later by proxy by using class and income. So how did cities react to the nineteen sixty-eight Fair Housing Act? They continued to use the tools that were available after that act became law to, quote-unquote, protect their single-family residential neighborhoods, their R1 zones, and to preserve the makeup of those neighborhoods. Often, this meant downzoning some neighborhoods where previously and naturally small-scale multifamily apartments would have been allowed. So these became an expanded R1 zone. The city of L.A. is just an example, but it's a notable example. So through the nineteen sixties and eighties, the city of L.A. updated several of its community plans to downzone its planned residential capacity. So from a theoretical capacity of ten million residents in the late nineteen fifties, it downzoned itself to four million or so residents by the nineteen eighties. And that's approximately what the population of L.A. is now. And generally, that same time period, there was also a dramatic slowdown in the production of apartments, multifamily buildings, given these policies that cities were putting in place. So prior to nineteen fifty, when the population of California was ten billion or even less, the average annual production of apartment units in California was around two hundred thousand units per year. In the nineteen eighties, that had fallen to less than half, when the population of California had more than doubled. So the supply of housing available to the residents of California was drastically curtailed through deliberate policy decisions that cities put in place after the Fair Housing Act was passed. And L.A. was not alone. So this graphic on this slide shows the other cities of, some of the other cities of California, what they did to, again, manage growth, slow growth down, and specifically to reduce the opportunities for developing small-scale apartment buildings in their cities. Typically, this time period aligned with the sixties and seventies. And these policy actions really have been the precursor to our housing crisis. So as these policies went in place, housing production clearly declined, as you saw on the previous slide. Rents rose, and now cities had to deal with affordability in their cities. So the first rent control ordinances came about a few years after these new general plan updates in the nineteen seventies and eighties. And since then, we're living in a planning era that has a really complex set of housing programs, like deed-restricted affordable units, low-income housing tax credits, inclusion rezoning, and a range of programs, all of which are dealing with affordability and all of which stem from the reactionary policies and positions that cities adopted in the nineteen sixties and seventies with regard to planning reform that the Fair Housing Act had hoped to put in place. Where are we today? These are a bunch of citywide maps for some representative U.S. cities. The color pink shows areas of these cities where only single-family homes are permitted, so one home per lot. Areas in blue show residential areas that permit more than one home per lot, so multifamily and apartment buildings. New York City is an outlier. Only fifteen percent of the city's footprint is set aside for single-family only. Washington, D.C. is thirty-six percent, but then almost every other city typically is in the seventy percent-plus range. So seventy percent of the residential land of these cities is set aside for single-family only. You will see that Eureka slots neatly into the spectrum. Eureka is about seventy-eight percent of the residentially zoned land in Eureka is single-family only. Another striking statistic from a paper that UC Berkeley published earlier this year is that across the state of California, about ninety-five percent of all the residentially zoned land in California is single-family only. So what does this mean from a policy standpoint? So given the amount of land that is set aside for just one home per lot, the vast majority of the areas of these cities are just absorbed from playing any role in the creation of affordable housings, whether it's naturally occurring or deed-restricted, because the kind of housing typologies that are affordable, whether natural or deed-restricted, are not allowed to be built on seventy-five percent plus of the land area of these cities. Another notable policy consideration is that there is segregation. So as we saw, the original policy goal of single-family only or R1 zoning was to segregate the residents of cities first based on race and then based on class. And this continues to serve as the inadvertent framework for land use policymaking and decision-making. And this is not to say anything about, I know there was a discussion that you all had about Climate Action Plan, but this approach, I'm not even touching the issue of what climate impacts are created by the sprawl and car dependency that these planning approaches create. So moving on to part two of this discussion, and this is where we look at development and planning trends in the city of Eureka in this similar about hundred-year timeframe. And I know this will be familiar to many of you, so I'll summarize quickly. So Eureka was incorporated in eighteen fifty-six. Origins are tied to mining and lumber industries. Clearly, when it was set up, there were no formal rules or regulations around zoning or land use policy. So there were different types of housing, different mix of uses, and they all responded to the need and were built based on that need. They were, the older waterfront areas of the city were developed first, so Old Town, the Commercial Bayfront, Library District. This was followed by a period of prolonged growth in the early twentieth century. So the first horse-tron streetcars were introduced in the eighteen eighties, and then they were followed by electric streetcars in the early nineteen hundreds, and this transportation infrastructure allowed the city to expand. And development occurred along streetcar corridors like East Street and J Street. And again, pre-zoning and streetcar corridors like East Street and J Street. And again, pre-zoning and mix of uses and a mix of both multifamily and single-family housing types. Um the housing stock that was built in this pre-land use and pre-zoning era, as these photographs will show you, was a mix of small-scale apartment buildings, duplex, multiplexes. Um and these have come to really define Eureka's neighborhoods and the city's image, its old historic building stock. The first real zoning ordinance came into play in the nineteen fifty, so nineteen fifty-three. Eureka adopted its zoning ordinance. Um this established R one as the default zone for the city. So it and it went effect furthers, that all future areas of annexation would automatically become become R one zoning regardless of the existing use. And it just established R one as the, at least for residential use, as the norm for the city. In nineteen sixty-six, the city undertook a comprehensive update to its zoning. It added minimum parking requirements and yard requirements. And now with the benefit of hindsight, we know that these requirements likely created barriers to development, especially barriers to development of that historic housing stock that was so uh integral to the city's character originally. In fact, many of those photographs from those previous slides, those buildings likely became non-conforming and or illegal to build, given the new requirements for setbacks and parking. So what was going on in the rest of the country in this in the nineteen sixties? So you'll recall that in the nineteen sixties, most cities across the nation were dealing with the fallout from the Fair Housing Act. And they were putting in place either expanded R one areas or downzoning. And it's it's likely, one can't say for sure, that uh the planning mindset within Eureka reflected by this nineteen sixty-six planning ordinance was similar. It aligned with what the rest of the country was doing. Moving closer to our current time period, in twenty eighteen, many of people know the city updated um its general plan. There was an updated vision to promote compact walkable neighborhoods. And in twenty nineteen, the zoning ordinance and standards were updated to reflect the new general plan. Uh recognizing the barriers that were put in place by the nineteen sixty-six plan, they would reduce parking and yard requirements, the minimum lot widths and depth widths were relaxed, there were incentives for infill and adaptive reuse. And it's important to note that this marks, and Eureka is a good example, a the beginning of a reformist approach to to planning. There are several other cities, as you will see in the next section, that are that have already undertaken these exercises or in the process of undertaking exercises to rethink what R one means for their cities. And we'll talk about that in part three. So Eureka today is, as one would expect, um given our understanding of the evolution of planning in the United States in the last hundred years, seventy-eight percent of residential land is is owned single-family only. It allows apartments and multifamily. It's Eureka has gone through several periods of growth. There was an early period associated with its funding where there were no regulations, it's responding need, a growing economy, a growing population. There was a multiple generations of restrictive regulations starting in the nineteen sixties. And now it appears that there's growing acknowledgement that the approaches from the sixties and seventies are likely in need of reform. Which takes us to our last and final section, which is what are other cities doing to address the legacy of R one zoning and why and how are they going about it? So we picked, there are several cities that are doing this. So we picked four cities to try and quickly summarize their different approaches. And the cities that we've picked are on a spectrum where they're either making minimal marginal efforts to revise their R one zoning and housing policy to cities that are doing a lot and are very substantive in achieving different outcomes. So the first one, on the minimal side of the spectrum, is the city of Santa Monica. Um the city of Santa Monica looked at the nomenclature of its R one zone. The first thing it did is it removed the word family from the definition of the zone because nowhere in its municipal code and many other cities municipal code is the word family defined. So it's referred to now as R one single unit residential. The city council also adopted an apology resolution uh acknowledging the harm that the city's R one uh zoning and land use policy had placed on the city's black residents. Um so granted, it is the outcomes that R one zoning will achieve in the city of Santa Monica are similar to what it has been for the previous decades, but it's made a first step at addressing the language that is used, if that is embedded in R one, uh which is powerful in itself. The second city is the city of San Diego, and the city of San Diego uses the framework of existing state laws, specifically the ADU law, to really maximize the production of small-scale developments and housing units in the context of single-family neighborhoods. So we all know that ADUs are now allowed by right across all single-family zones. San Diego goes beyond, where if you opt into the bonus ADU program, you can do unlimited ADUs and parcels and you're limited only by twelve standards, including messing. The city of Sacramento is currently in the process um of adopting a expanded middle housing program. And when I say currently, I mean that literally. So serendipitously, Sacramento has, city council has its adoption hearing this evening, as we're talking, to adopt a revised approach to R one. So what the city of Sacramento intends to do is it would allow neighborhood scale, house scale, multi-dwelling, multi-unit dwellings in its existing R one zones. The number of units is not limited. They are only regulated by scale and form of the buildings. The city of Sacramento additionally reduces the minimum lot size down to twelve hundred square feet. Typically, um cities are in the region of four thousand, five thousand square feet as well as lots, which is acknowledged to be a barrier to uh affordability in single-family zones. Uh then the fourth city is the city of Spokane, similar to Sacramento, but Spokane uh has already adopted its missing middle housing policy. So it allows duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes by right on R one zones. There is no limit to the number of townhomes and row homes, if that's the housing type that's used and next. Because they're that housing typology, they have no set back requirements. And the city of Spokane also reduces its uh minimum lot size or has reduced its minimum lot size. So where do, where does Eureka go from here? So I think a question that we need answering is, um given the baggage that R one carries, um what potential pathways are available uh to consider? So we know that Eureka has a really unique historic building stock of small-scale residential development. It's now commonly referred to as missing middle, but this was um built in Eureka in the eighteen hundreds and nineteen hundreds uh before nineteen fifty-three and nineteen sixty-six. That kind of development has not been built or seen uh since sixty-six because of uh burdensome regulations and barriers to development. What I will say is that, given the experience um and proactive efforts that of other cities who want to get on the right side of history, uh somewhere on the road ahead, there is an opportunity to really legalize housing types that existed naturally in the city of Eureka, that were integral to its origin story, that were characteristic of its building form. And it's a discussion, I think, that we're happy to participate in, and I'm sure the community will also be, it would would like that. So with that, I'm going to conclude. I want to thank you for your time again. I hope this was informative. I'm going to hand it back to Kristin. We, I'm here for questions.
Thank you. That was very interesting. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Fernandez?
Still trying to, trying to formulate it so it comes out correctly. That was very dense material. I'm very grateful for it. When, when there's the discussion of deed-restricted affordable housing, we're typically talking about up to fifty or fifty-five years, correct? And they're typically paying rent at that point. Am I correct in that? Thank you. Thank you for answering that. And so I'm curious if there's any, any other mechanisms out there for affordable for-sale homes? What does that look like? Is there anything that we can point to or look at in that? If we're looking at homeownership, apparently, or to some degree?
There's been a lot of discussions in the housing group that council member Castellano is on about potentially cooperative housing. We've also discussed and have been in discussions with developers on some of the properties that we've got agreements with already about not just making them for rent, but to to do purchase options as well. We do still have one of our properties left from this housing element that, you know, we've been talking to developers about and um haven't really landed on any of that. But one of them that we did speak to where was discussing ownership.
Right. That's really the only question I have. Everything else is commentary. So, thank you.
Anything further? Councilmember Castellano?
Sure. Um uh thank you, Mr. Srivastava, uh for the presentation. It was really interesting and and specific to councilmember Fernandez's question in terms of, you know, we, we have been looking at, you know, what are some opportunities for homeownership in term, in, you know, affordable by design options and for sure, ADUs are part of that solution. Um you know, one of the things we also looked at is condominiums. And my understanding is those um are difficult to insure. Um you know, I know this isn't really specific to this, you know, but it's maybe part of a larger statewide challenge around insurance and condominiums. Have you heard anything about that? Or are there any changes in kind of, you know, these different kinds of affordable options to make them more for, for, you know, for cities able to implement them and actually have people living in them?
Yeah, I, I can try and respond to that, councilmember. So, so you're, so you're right in your observation about the insurance challenges for condominiums. There's the liability law that exists in, exists in California that makes affordable, for-sale, multifamily units challenging. And the only thing I can say is that there's been discussion in housing policy advocate groups and how to revise and reform that law, but I am not aware of any specific changes that are imminent.
Thank you. Councilmember Conjures Deluch?
My question actually, I think, is for Director Kenyon. So I was, uh, when we were going through the slides, it said that Sacramento had reduced their square foot lot minimums to twelve hundred square feet. What is ours currently?
For the single-family zone, it's five thousand square feet. And it used to be six thousand until the twenty nineteen code update.
Uh is that, I'm sorry, for a single-family home? That's for R one?
That's for R one.
The, what it, what is our, so in R two and that kind of thing, where people have single-family homes currently, but can add ADUs or can section off the back portion of their property or sell it or whatever, what are our minimum lot requirements in the city?
For um R two, it's uh two thousand square feet. And R one, gosh, is two thousand square feet as well.
So maybe that's something we could look at too going forward, is maybe looking at those lower reductions so that that increases potential?
Anything further? Thank you so much for being here and for your presentation. It was very interesting. This will take us to public comment period. This is time, this is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. City council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. The public will be allowed to speak concurrently with the calling of an agenda item following the staff presentation of that item. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the Eureka City Council or the city council may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. Is there anyone here to speak in public comment? Please come forward. Welcome.
Hi there. How are you?
Good, good.
Good. Yeah, I've been here before, but uh my grandson's gonna be driving next year and uh my great niece is driving now, but uh I've mentioned before, when I was here about a month ago, about, you know, reinstating a traffic enforcement department if we could, even if it was self-funded. I spent a lot of time at Myrtle and West in that side of town, and you've seen it, that they use the right turn lane by the fire station as a passing lane. Yeah. And the other day, a guy started this side of the, the fire station. And when the light turned green, he just went and if anybody was pulling out at the East Avenue or, you know, coming across from the recovery houses, they would have been wiped out. And then when I take my walks down at the bottom of Harrison, uh it's becoming common that people are, California stopping at the red light to go up Harrison off of Myrtle from downtown and not even looking in the crosswalk. So like I said, I'm a third-generation veteran here. My grandfather's fought in the wars and hard workers and help work on the Harbor Commission, my dad, William Stardry, and my grandfather came over and worked at the mill for forty years. Now we've got five generations here. So whatever y'all can do towards that, you know, trying to make it a little safer on the streets. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for being here. Come on up. Welcome, Trent.
Hello. Mayor and council, thank you for what you do. I appreciate it. We're still praying for you guys, praying for the city. And we're still meeting. We, we did start this week at five thirty and just praying. So if anybody want, I know you had another council meeting going, but if anybody would like to pray, we'd love to pray with you. And our church is in uh District One, and we are fixing that eyesore. We are working on it, and I'm just telling you, we're working on it. I promise. Okay. So uh this morning, as I'm praying for the city, I really believe the Lord woke me up and put me on assignment and I'm down there and I'm, I'm working on this thing. I'm going to present to you, but I got to get all my ducks in a row. And three minutes goes really quick. I got to be careful. But I want to present something thoughtful and helpful to the city, so I'm working on it. Okay, so I just want to read something and then I'll be out of here. I desire, and I know we all desire, that Eureka would be a strong, healthy, prosperous city. And I believe that God and his wisdom is how we're going to get there. And uh I'm going to read out of Isaiah. It says, "We have a strong city," which is what we want. "God will appoint salvation for walls and bulwarks. Open the gates that the righteous nation which keeps the truth may enter in. You will keep at perfect peace those whose mind is stayed on you." He's got the wisdom, he's got our help if we just ask him, because he trusts in you. Trust in the Lord forever, for Yahweh, the Lord, is the everlasting strength. He brings down those who dwell in high places. Another place it says he resists the proud, he gives grace to the humble. Let's be humble. Uh goes on the feet, "The way of the just is upright, the most upright. You weigh the path of the just, yes, in the way of your judgments. Oh, Lord, we have waited for you. The desire of our soul is for your name and for the remembrance of you." Thank you again for all that you do. Have a great night.
Thanks, Trent. Note to self, sorry, I meant to do this. Come on up.
Good evening. Um my name is Misty. I don't know if I need to state my name or anything like that. Well, um I attend Trent's fellowship and I'm actually a success story, a person who came to Eureka homeless. I worked my entire life. I was a single mom at the age of eighteen. And uh when she went to college, my oldest, I fell into depression and I lost everything I had due to that depression. And uh there was a house fire that happened almost three years ago and I've been sober ever since. I was drinking that night. I'm not sure what happened, but um I went to like seven different recovery programs. I was in Betty Chin's program here and I've been working now for almost a year here in Eureka. I have my own vehicle. Um and it's mainly due to people that attend Trent's fellowship and just people in this community at the mission that really assisted me through that process and helped me get back on my feet. I'm definitely not what a person would consider a typical person who just wound up homeless because of things. You know, I think that there was a, a lot of valid reasons that I ended up the way I was. And, and I really feel as if I'm a good example of hope for people in my situation. And uh I could be any one of you folks. I worked for the California Department of Corrections for twelve years before the beginning of COVID, when I quit my job. for twelve years before the beginning of COVID, when I quit my job because I couldn't handle my mental state on top of everything else. So um, you know, between my faith and the good people in this community, I've been able to turn my life around. And I just, I just want that to be an example of the potential that our fellowship has to um do what this community needs most, and that is to restore the broken and recover those who have lost their way. And I think that's a prevalent theme for the evening already. And so I'm very, feeling very privileged to be able to speak tonight also. So thank you for that. And I just wanna read a scripture that has um has kept me going this entire time through all of the bumps in the road, and that is Psalm twenty-seven, uh, four and five. "One thing I have asked of the Lord, that I will seek after, that I may dwell in the house of the Lord all the days of my life, to gaze upon the beauty of the Lord and to inquire in his temple. For he will hide me in his shelter in the day of trouble. He will conceal me under the cover of his tent. He will lift me high upon a rock." And that's all. Thank you.
Thanks for being here, Misty, and thank you for sharing your vulnerability. Appreciate that so much. Anyone else out here in the audience who would like to speak? Seeing no one, we'll go over to Zoom, and it looks like we have Tim.
Yes, am I on?
Yes, you are. Welcome.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I'd like to comment on that presentation. If that, is that part of the agenda or not? Cause there wasn't a comment period on that. Can I do so?
Yeah, that would be fine.
Okay. Um, you know, in, in watching the presentation, it seemed like there was quite, quite a bit of research done. Immediately, we started off on large cities across the nation, very informative. But I noticed all the comparisons of, to our community, the size of the towns were not representative as apples to apples. Um, you know, we had San Diego, Sacramento, San Francisco, Santa Monica. Eureka is a rural community. There is a reason we live here, because it is rural. We don't want people built right next door to you, um, you know, within feet. There is a lifestyle here. You, as a city council, need to address everybody's feelings in here. We're not against housing, but at the same time, let's not destroy our city by just making it like any other big city. Anyway, thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Tim. Colin?
Good evening. Uh, Colin Fisk with CRTP. Uh, first, I just wanted to really thank the council for having that presentation on the history of single family zoning. It's just so little understood and so important for us to understand the history of how we got to this place and how we got to a place where the, the large majority of the city is restricted to this one kind of development that's um, you know, not, not the historical norm, but was uh developed with prejudice in mind. And so I think it's just so important to understand how we got here. And then secondly, on a different topic, I wanted to remind everybody that uh the Week Without Driving is coming up, September thirtieth through October sixth. And um really encourage everybody who's interested to participate in that and to, you know, get a better understanding of what it's like for all those folks in our communities who don't have access to a vehicle, who are non-drivers for various reasons. And you can find out more on CRTP's website, which is transportationpriorities.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin. Philip?
Uh, an array of comments on a variety of topics. Uh, I heard that the Myrtle and West intersection has a right-hand only turn in front of the fire station. However, that is a straight or turn lane as visible both on the road end by Google Maps. I uh, I live a few doors down to one of our local neighborhood recovery centers. Love it. They're fantastic neighbors. Folks, addicts really aren't, they're not dangerous unless their supply is in danger. And we can come out of it, but my goodness. Just treat folks like folks. Now, um, the presentation was very excellent. It did omit the costs that we accept with the bulk of R1 zoning that we have around. R1 zoning is awful expensive. It extends all of our city liabilities that much further per capita. That's per taxpayer. Like, we need to be a bit closer together if we're gonna pay for everything we need to pay for. Else, we're gonna have very expensive taxes. And I don't know about y'all, but I am just sick of all the lies surrounding Measure F. I'm getting flyers, people showing up at my door. My goodness, like somebody, somebody like had a fit at a council meeting a long time ago, decided, well, it's a capitalist democracy, so I can, like, democracy comes second. I can just pay for this. And has gone through all sorts of expensive and effective machinations to push through that individual's own agenda. Folks don't listen to this stuff. Measure F is a, is a, it's just a lie. Oh, no. Okay. Thank you very much. And, and also to those of you council members who suffered the attacks a year and a half ago, thank you for being so steadfast in service of our community.
Thank you, Philip. Do you see anyone else, Shannon?
I see no one else on Zoom.
Okay. Last chance, anybody else in the audience that would like to share in public comment? Okay. Seeing no one, we'll return to our agenda, to the consent calendar. All matters listed under this category are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. Pursuant to City Council Resolution twenty-one eleven dash two-two, if a member of the public would like an item on the consent calendar polled and discussed separately, the request shall be made to a council member prior to the meeting. Unless a specific request is made by a council member, the consent calendar will not be read. There will be no separate discussion of these items. And I know that F2 is being polled. Are there any other items that need to be polled this evening? Okay, seeing no one, can I get a um motion?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar, uh, with the exception of item F2.
I'll second.
Great. Motion and second. Please vote.
Unanimous yes vote. Motion carries.
Thank you. So we will talk about pavement rehabilitation. Director of Public Works Gerving. Thanks for being here.
And thanks for having me. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So the item before you uh tonight is award of the pavement rehabilitation twenty-twenty-four project. Uh, it includes a lot of good work repaving a good stretch of Harris Street from Broadway to A, H Street uh from Harris to Oak, and Myrtle from Fifth to Harrison. So a lot of, a lot of paving happening, all made possible by Measure H. About two and a half million dollars worth is what staff is requesting. Uh, the project was advertised earlier this summer, and five bids were received with Mercer Frasier as the low bidder at two point two-five million or so. And uh in addition to the actual paving rehab work, there are improvements consistent with the complete streets policy, including buffered bike lanes on both Harris and H Streets, and extension of the bike facility on Myrtle Avenue. If you've got any questions, I can try to answer them.
I have a quick clarification. Did you say Broadway to A?
Correct.
So we're doing work on Broadway?
No, we're on Harris from Broadway to A.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Does anyone else have any questions? Okay. Seeing no one, we'll open this item up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on this item? Seeing no one, uh, let's see, we have Colin on Zoom.
Hello again. Um, yeah, I, I just wanted to, first of all, um, thank staff for um including bike and pedestrian improvements in alignment with the complete streets policy. It's good to see that. Um, and uh just to say, it wasn't entirely clear from the staff report what the pedestrian improvements would be precisely, but we would like to make sure that um at, at a minimum, they include high-visibility crosswalk markings at each of the legal crosswalks in the project vicinity. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin. Uh, do you see anybody else?
I see no one else.
Seeing no one else, we'll bring it back to council for comments. Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, I, I pulled this um, this item just so people knew what was going on, in case they didn't read the agenda summary, and um see that we're working to upgrade roads that have been years and years and years uh without rehabilitation. So I'll make the motion to approve F2.
I'll second.
Great. We have a motion and a second. Thank you, Measure H. Thank you, voters. Please vote.
Unanimous yes vote. Motion carries.
That leads us to legislative action correspondence. Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I actually changed my mind, and um I'd like to see us, I know I brought up Prop thirty-six, which I personally think um is something to people to, to look at. And um governor and legislature have uh talked about trying to deal with crime. And so it's, it's their attempt jointly to try and address what a lot of people feel like is, is a problem. You know, recid, uh, repeat offenders and so, um, but all that said, I think um more importantly right now um to discuss is Proposition Four that I'd like to see us um support. That's the climate bond. It's perfect timing since we just talked about the Climate Action Plan. And for the city, I think it's an important consideration because there's about um a billion dollars in um potential grant funding for things like coastal resiliency, four hundred and fifteen million, coastal flood management, three hundred and fifty million. So um I'd like to see us write a letter of support for the climate bond. I think it would be um do wonders for the city, especially when it comes to the Climate Action Plan. It could help us uh fund a lot of those activities we're talking about.
Okay, looks like we have thumbs up all around. Thank you. Moving on to ordinances and resolutions, reports and action items, we have our Eureka Bike Plan adoption with City Engineer Willer. Thanks for being here.
All right, let somebody else drive. Um, good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're here to present the Eureka Bike Plan. This uh, excuse me, uh, this effort stems from a need for an orderly and informed plan for bike facilities in the city. Um, as we've been hearing about tonight, Eureka is a historic city. The city is built out with a existing roadway network that's primarily geared towards motor vehicles. Um, bike, bike, bike facilities do exist within the city, and we've been expanding those facilities as we can, often where roadway width or other opportunities are available for facilities. Um, this process that we went through with the bike plan allowed us to um really do an in-depth community engagement effort to help understand that opportunities that only the, the bikers or cyclists of Eureka might understand. Um, the ones who use the facilities in the city, the streets, they're the ones who have an in-depth knowledge of how things work in the city and provided a lot of feedback throughout the process. Um, it also allowed us to understand um concerns that other communities might have regarding changes to roadways. We'll present the planning process where we left off in March. We came and we present and give you an update on where we were at in March. From here, we're gonna kinda take it from there. But we'll also talk about the, the bigger picture, um, everything that went into the plan. Um, tonight, we have Paul Martin, he's here with us tonight. This is Paul. He's with Mark Thomas. They're the consultant who helped us with the plan. Jay Riddle, uh, also with Mark Thomas, who's not here tonight. She was a, had a great effort in the, in, in our process. Uh, also, Jay Wardlebor, Wardlebor, our um, on city staff, had a, a big role to play as well. Mark Thomas was selected as the highest-ranked um consultant when we put out an RFP, and they had interest in the process. And one of the things that really stood out with him was their, um, their process to engage the community. It's something that we felt was really important, and they really provided a, a strong um process that we um followed throughout. And with that, I will turn it over to Paul.
Wonderful. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As mentioned, I'm Paul Martin. I work at a consulting firm called Mark Thomas. It's a lot of first names, so uh you could call me Paul or Mark. Either one works. Uh, as Jesse mentioned, we are the consultant that helped the city and the community with the Bicycle Master Plan. I have a civil and traffic engineering background, but really enjoy the transportation planning and the community engagement activities that Jesse mentioned as well. So I'm gonna walk through uh the presentation slides. I have a tendency to go through these quickly, so feel free to stop me, or of course, we can recap on any of the slides if I breeze through it too quickly. Okay, next slide. Jesse's gonna help me advance.
Or somebody in the back may help us advance. There we go.
He was on it. So uh our agenda will touch base. Again, I did the welcome myself, and we wanna talk through why the bicycle plan. Uh, Jesse alluded to it a little bit, as well as talking about our process and what is next, of course, just getting to the next steps for you. There's a lot of planning background documents that were reviewed. A discussion already came up about the complete streets policy related to the pavement rehab work. Uh, and really this goal of creating an orderly plan for an enhancement of the bicycle network, adding to and coming up with new bikeways. Next slide. And there was the discussion about community engagement. So we embrace these projects to really facilitate engagement from the community and the stakeholders, rather than engineering staff and consultants just sitting here at City Hall, for example, and coming up with ideas. We want to really have it be an iterative process for the community to provide input at large. And think about grant funding. So when we advance our transportation planning studies, the name of the game frankly is money and how we can position the agency for grant success or funding with what funds you have available. Uh, but primarily for most agencies, positioning for those grant opportunities that are available. So the whole process and the community engagement really positions you in a strong uh strategic role to advance. Jesse mentioned a little bit of catching you up since March. There was a presentation to city council. Uh, through our plan development, we had some subsequent activities. Uh, most recently, I will recap our full engagement activities, but here you see uh our project task force meeting in-person engagement activities, uh, developing our draft report, presenting that to the Traffic Safety Commission, uh, and posting our draft report online, all that occurring since April or May, March more recently. Uh, there's some images and graphics here. I apologize, it's bleeding off the top there, but in-person engagement activities more recently, you see Jay Wardlebor from the team in the images on the left, uh, at the market more recently this summer. Nice sunny day there. So in-person directly with the community, being able to talk about the existing bikeway network and improvement projects and facilitating input, of course, with the bicycle plan. And our process related to getting a draft plan to the final plan. So we do have a project task force, advisory members throughout the community that was able to take a look at the document and provide that was able to take a look at the document and provide input and really helped us make some refinements and edits. Some of these presentations have been in person or on video. So those screenshots on the right show us presenting those concepts to the project task force and getting that input. Again, part of our process more recently in getting draft to final to you tonight. The full report covers multiple key topics, so we're going to go through these. There's acknowledgements, evaluating the existing network, the study area, and talking, the report documents the engagement activities, develops recommendations and then advances to next steps. So I'm going to walk through some of those. Again, I'm going to go through it more quickly. Go ahead, Jesse. With any planning level study, we want to take a good pulse on all the background planning documents that somehow layer in or contribute to what we're doing. So there's a good inventory on the screen as you could see and in the body of the report of things that we took a look at. They might be city of Eureka documents or regional agencies as well as census data that's available. Thanks. Our existing conditions part documents the land use within the community, the bikeway network and how it serves key destinations, including schools. Think about what the transit network exists in the city and crash data. So we've got a mixture of data that we're taking a look at. Documented collisions that get reported by your police department to the state and are published and online, but also near miss data. So there is an online database where the community can provide some sort of record of near miss activities. The gentleman that spoke earlier from the Coast Guard, I don't know what his name was, but he talked about incidents personally. So as a resident or a community member, someone can go into this online database and be able to provide that. So we layered that on top of the documented crash data to be able to help inform us of where the needs are. And our team created a model, the last item on the screen there is called a level of traffic stress, with the intent to be able to say with all these inputs, where is the stress level high if I'm bicycling within the community? So that really helped inform our understanding of the community. This is the data side of it. Then there's also the engagement side that we talked about. Go ahead, Jesse. So now this is our larger recap of all the engagement activities. So over the past year and a half or so, we've had a project task force that met six different times. They provided input. Those were key stakeholders that were interested in this topic. And we had really three different phases of input from the community. So started off with an engagement survey, in-person and virtual meetings. And at different phases, we repeated some degree of that in-person and virtual activities, an open house at the Jefferson Center. And then the phase three with really in the last few months and that image from the Friday night market, for example, and culminating tonight with the presentation to council. So the screens cut off there, what it's calling out is the recommendations cover a variety of different things. So I talked about existing data analysis, the community input. That informed then our ideas for coming up with project concepts and some corridors that then were refined. Then we developed essentially this next level of what a planned or recommended bikeway network would exist in the city. We tested again what the level of traffic stress would be with that new network and saw what those improvements would be. We could stop there, but for every agency that really need Jesse and the team would say, well, where do I start? So with each agency, we want to go ahead and develop some prioritization based on key criteria and evaluate and identify what the top ranked projects are that again would account for public input as well as technical data. And we have an eye towards grants, so a lot of times we're mimicking some of the criteria that occurs in different grant funding programs. Within the community, we also did get input again on what those concepts were and the idea of better connections, whether they are on the roadway or maybe bridges over the gulches or other areas throughout the community. And then at the root of the firm that I work at, we have a lot of engineering staff. So we developed some design concepts and alternatives that then could focus on the top five ranked corridors. So that again positions the agency to pursue grant funding using those concept plans and cost estimates. Now I'm getting to the next steps. We talked about identifying the top ranked projects. Then identified recommendations related to phasing those improvements as well as how the implementation process would go. Frankly, your public work staff doesn't need to be told that, but it's documented in the report so that the community could better understand it as well. And identified promising grant funding opportunities that the agency could pursue. And we rounded out with a conclusion document. So the image on the right shows the recommended network. And then there's some yellow highlights there what those top five corridors are. And I think that comes up in the subsequent slides, so we'll talk through that a little further. So I do have more slides. We'll keep going through. Go ahead, Jesse. Then we wanted to explain a little bit more in detail that the top of the screen is a little cut off, but we wanted to explain in more detail the different types of bikeways you might see in the recommended report. So an off-street trail or a multi-use path like you see in the photograph on the upper right is recommended on different, in different parts of the community. So places like Sixth Street or California Street or Waterfront Drive along the corridor, very similar to what you see on the ground today or you will see when the Betazoo Trail is constructed. The next slide shows where some of those are being recommended. Traveling south towards the golf course or the waterfront drive area and trying to really extend that trail that you have through the downtown. There's just a few precise locations like that where you see the bulk of it really is the on-street network, given you've got your gridded network. So go ahead, Jesse. The next one is a more typical, what you would expect, an on-street bike lane where there's a dedicated space for cyclists. So we call that a Class 2 bike lane. It's 2 is just the category from Caltrans. And that may be with or without this buffered bike lane. So you heard the director mention adding that buffer, like in the image in the bottom right, where available. So you already have city staff embracing these concepts, but they're documented within the report. And there's a few different roadways that identify enhancements like was shown on the screen. Go ahead to the next slide. So Myrtle, the discussion of Sixth and Seventh, Wabash, Henderson and Harrison, Camden, really trying to enhance or add on-street bike lanes for those roadways. Okay? And then with the gridded network within the city, you do have the opportunity with Class 3 bike routes or bike boulevards. You already have a few in the city. Really this would, think of it as be more residential streets in nature where there's not a dedicated space for an on-street bike lane that's solely for cyclists. So it might be a residential street where there's on-street parking on both sides or just a more narrow roadway. There's a good volume of these that are identified. So in this case, the goal is to have that connectivity on dedicated roadways. And it would be done through defined signing and striping, paint on the ground and then some other features. So the images on the right show some examples that have been conceived at this point for the C Street Bike Boulevard, which is a project the city has already secured funding for. So a lot like what you see on H and I Street, some green conflict zone striping on the ground to really highlight where those merging areas are and help remind the motorists to look for cyclists. Or in the bottom right image, some features that might look a lot like traffic calming, but can help also align with bicycling through the community. And there's a good volume of opportunities within the community to have these bicycle boulevards. So the next screen shows a lot more yellow you see there. So the bikeway network planning is this balancing of trade-offs and thinking about what's your roadway network look like, what are those destinations? And what can you fit within the paradigm of today's, what's acceptable and what would work within the community? So the bike boulevards work well with the generally lower speed and lower volume roadways that are shown on the screen there and provide that connectivity. So when we've been doing engagement and working in the community, we went out riding with some of the community members and pretty much listened a lot. And they said, oh, this route to that route is really great to ride. We appreciate those. So we got the benefit of really the community telling us where those bike boulevards could really be enhanced and identified and not just be word of mouth among a few friends or people that have found their own way to help really identify those in the network. Okay? And then relatively recently, within the industry, we have something called cycle tracks. The idea here is really a street that really has an on-street bike lane that then we introduce a vertical element to separate the bikeway from the motor vehicle lanes. And that provides that separation that a lot of people really want and prefer. So you can't, maybe you can't construct an off-street trail in that area, but you can really enhance that on-street bike lane more than just a buffer. So you've got some treatment like that within the city on the south end by the golf course. And then there were a couple precise locations that we recommend advancing that further. So 15th and Spring Street. So Spring Street, for example, on that edge up against Winco, there's no parking or limited parking in that area because of the commercial center. And it might be a nice opportunity to really test it out. And then 15th Street where the roadway is really wide, probably that legacy from really the streetcar back in the day with the community being built out. Some opportunities to really test out the cycle track within the city. In the future, there might be more opportunities for things like cycle track throughout other parts of the community, but this is a nice way for the city to start really exploring this treatment and see how well it works. Okay? And I did mention that our analysis identified the top ranked corridors for further implementation. Those are listed here. It's really more than five because we considered Henderson and Harris together with the couplet. Today, there is bike, there are bike lanes on Harrison Henderson, but the idea is how can those be advanced and enhanced further? And then looking at the connectivity and closer to downtown along Washington, Eighth and L Street. It's kind of a east-west and then L going north-south that still provides access into the downtown. Hawthorne and Humboldt as well as Sixth and Seventh and Third. So really it's much more than five roadways in particular. So the image on the bottom looks a lot more like an engineering design plan. It's an aerial image with dimensions shown. This goes a long way for pursuing those grants to show that the city has the concepts. They understand that everything fits within the space provided and really starts to lay out what type of engineering treatments might be employed. This is just conceptual. It's not ready for construction just yet. If the city is able to secure funding for improvements like what's shown on the screen, then it would advance through the typical engineering process of getting design plans that can be constructed by a contractor. Okay? All right, so that covers the bike plan, a lot of the bits and pieces that are in there. You all got a little bit of a primer on bikeway design and the different categories. Tonight, really, we're presenting the draft or our draft final report to the City Council for adoption. So I'm available for any questions or we are both. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Malton?
Hi there. Thank you so much for that and for all of this work. It's very thorough. I have a number of questions and comments, but I was wondering if you would go back to that example street there that you had some improvements and just walk us through what's actually in that picture?
Towards the end, probably. Yes.
Just that last one, right?
So then usually when we do the engineering drawings, we'll take an aerial image and we think of it as maybe like 15, 20% concept plans. So then I think, yeah, you're getting there. A little bit of a delay, right, Jesse? So the lines on the map really show what the changes would be. So we take the aerial image, the lines in black are showing in particular, in this case, maybe the crosswalks or the center line of the roadway. And you may see that there's an image of a bicycle, it went away. An image of a bicycle with arrows on top of it. Those are called the shared lane markings or sharrows. You do have that treatment in other parts of the city. And again, it's that reminder for motorists to be on the lookout for cyclists. And in the image on the bottom left, there is an intersection there. That's at Third Street and 255, the Caltrans route that goes over to Samoa. Today, as a cyclist, you could navigate your way through. There's a crosswalk there, but it's not wide enough to really ride your bike through. So what we've recommended is that that could be a widened space and that Caltrans could actually add a push button that would illuminate, that would have the rapid flashing beacon. It's more of like a white amber flashing light within a regular pattern to better facilitate people either walking or bicycling to be able to cross and to have a gap in that median. So that would then cross and the roadway, I apologize, it's not labeled there. Oh, yeah, it is, but it's a little small. Third Street is the roadway that's going left to right here. So then you would have nice connectivity if I'm on the east side over by Target and I wanted to go downtown that I could just ride on Third. And in that case, the bicycles or pedestrians would be able to cross towards downtown further west, whereas motorists would be forced to make the right turn like they are today, really. So it's just some slight tweaks in this case in particular that better facilitate the bikeway travel.
Thank you. That helps understand sort of what we're talking about here. And I appreciate that this is just one tiny, one tiny little section of a much larger plan. Can I keep on? Are, so looking through all the, lots of different solutions that are on the menu here. Some of them, I'm wondering if all the solutions are sort of on the table for if we approve this plan to like pick and choose or would we have more of a chance to kind of look at individual situations? Some of them seem out of scale to me, things like a bike-specific traffic light in a city with very few traffic lights or bike detection. I'm just wondering how much specific control we have going forward as to how, which solutions are implemented in which places?
Yeah, this is, this plan is really a jump-off point in order to identify a network in the city and to identify what kind of tools we have in our toolbox in order to apply out on the city streets. And then to come up with some, to kind of advance some of those, a few of those concepts that Paul mentioned here. So this is not final design. This is just, you know, like a broad picture of what these plans look like and to give us direction as to, you know, where we start, you know, the next phase of work as far as like what are those next routes that we're going to be moving forward with and going after grant funding or applying some of these treatments to.
Okay, great. And then some of the proposed corridors, this like initial five, these kind of big ones. I noticed one of them is Highland Avenue coming down out of Second Ward. And I just wanted to point out that there's potential of a big change in the traffic on that and McCullins if the CHP does indeed put their headquarters there at the Jacobs Campus. So I'm sure that's on your radar, but the neighborhood is very concerned about traffic impacts, especially on those two streets because they're the two that drop down to 101 right from there. CHP has a plan if they go in there and I'm sure that'll be part of the conversation. It'll need to be.
Yeah, and I think just real quickly on that, you know, this, this is a living document and it's not, it needs to grow in the future as our facilities change or as traffic patterns change, development happens or doesn't happen. So those are things that we all have to remember, you know, as we move forward in time, we're going to have to bring back the plan and update it with different modifications as, you know, we add in infrastructure and then we need to say, okay, well, what comes next after this? Or this changed here. So it's a living document and not meant to be static in time.
Sure. I didn't mean to drag us into the weeds. Also, I marked that as a question, but it was a statement. Anyone else?
Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you. And I'm glad to hear you to refer this as a, as a living document. That was one of the concerns I had from constituents was whether or not this mandates what's going to be. whether or not this mandates what's going to be moving forward and rest assured, or at least trying to assure them that this was helping us develop that plan and any sort of construction would, uh, there'd be notifying or notification of when that were to occur. And that's, I'm, I'm accurate in telling them that, correct?
Yeah, this is, we would still have to follow all the same processes that we would with planning projects and, and moving them through phases going forward.
I believe one of the concerns that was shared with us, uh, via email, and if you could just help me understand, uh, again, uh, the class three boulevards, why, why it seems there's the preponderance of those, uh, in this plan as designed currently?
Yeah, definitely. So I talked a little bit about trade-offs. So a lot of our, our job is to understand what the community is looking for, what they want, and then balance that with all the other demands within the community. So you've got pressure for housing projects or, uh, community members that really want to maintain parking on their street and finding that sweet spot on what type of improvements could be implemented and fit within that context. So given the, the gridded network, there's a lot of residential streets in particular and on-street parking we see on both sides. And sometimes frankly, going through residential area and removing on-street parking entirely is a bit of a non-starter, right? Uh, in front of homes, sometimes it, it's needed and it does occur, but for a bikeway project, so it's just gonna make more enemies typically. So we're trying to find that sweet spot on the balance between things like traffic needs or parking needs. Uh, and what that context is in the community. So when I think about the gridded network here in the city, uh, it leans towards a lot of bike boulevards uh, to really help with that connectivity throughout the area.
Well, not just the connectivity, but I would assume also, I, I think you said, uh, preserve the parking particularly in residential areas because that's, you know, I understand the importance of that for a lot of the families, uh, the working class folks there. And so I'm curious because you had highlighted H and I as, uh, potentially emulating those in the residential neighborhoods where they might be marked, uh, green. And so we have that kind of designated area, but still you have that preservation of parking. And so I'm curious if you could still have the opportunity to build in that, uh, that safety, at least in a sense of class two, where I'm thinking instead of the upright ballers that we see over on Fairway, perhaps you have those traffic armadillos that sit lower, but wouldn't be detrimental if you have to drive over them or need to drive over them for that matter. So is that something that we could consider moving forward with?
Yeah, definitely. And Fairway is one example. Uh, we're doing work up and down the state really on bicycle planning. I have another city where we've demonstrated different types of vertical elements such as the armadillos. It's a term of art for everyone's benefit of.
But that's what they're called though. So I'm not crazy in calling them that.
I, yeah, no, but I, I wanna give, yeah, you and everyone, I'm glad you know the term, but, uh, a lot of people don't. So then it's more just like a plastic oval shape. It looks like half a football.
Yeah.
Uh, and it still has some reflective tape on it, so it's visible, but it's lower profile. It has less conflict if, um, the edge of the car gets over that edge. Uh, but as a motorist, I would avoid hitting them with my tire. So armadillos, uh, wheel stops, uh, lower profile delineators, the higher profile. There's a lot of different treatments out there that are being explored for that separation that could be tested out. It really is evolving within the industry at this point. So the example on Fairway is a good way for you guys to start with one thing and then say, what else do we want to try? So the green conflict zone paint, armadillos, uh, the deline, delineators. They're all part of the toolbox for different solutions and countermeasures that could be tested.
And I'll, just to add to that really quickly, a, a lot of the bike, you, you mentioned you started with bicycle boulevards and I think a, a large reason why there's so many of those shown is that a majority of our city streets have a certain width to them, a, a built width where your, your parking lanes and your travel lanes take up the majority of the travel way. If you're not talking about sidewalk and additional, you know, anything additionally outside. So that's something that's a, a consideration with a bicycle boulevard where you don't have that opportunity for separation without changing the configuration of the travel lanes or the parking. You really have a certain amount of space to work with there. And I think when you're talking about armadillos, your, or, uh, other vertical or hard separation, you're talking about where you have the opportunity to fit in a facility, which is great when you can do that. It's just, that's one of those decision points that has to be made is like where, if there is additional space on the roadway, it's great. Um, and it can be provided and we're trying to include those in projects that we're doing, like we mentioned before with, uh, Harris and, and H. Um, but when it comes to a lot of the bicycle boulevards you see there, that's those, those roadway whiffs are kind of what they are. So there's, you'd have to look at trade-offs as far as what you do in those cases.
Right. And I think what you said makes sense when you're taking into consideration Harris and, uh, Harrison Henderson. And so, uh, that actually brings up one of the last, uh, one of the last questions I have is there was again, uh, going back to an email, I think that we all received, uh, about our ability to utilize a quick build program. Are you familiar with that? And, okay, uh, can you explain how that would work and whether or not that may be considered moving forward?
Yes. So then quick build, um, that, that's also a bit of a term of art within the engineering field. We recognize building projects often takes years from a capital improvement project perspective. And trying as an engineering industry to be faster about it. And quick build is a term of art for we're gonna use some durable materials that get us that concept faster without having to wait for the bigger process of engineering design, finding a contractor, construct it, something that could be done faster. So take for example, uh, curb extensions, you've seen them through the downtown area, uh, and the construction associated with that, actually tearing up some of the asphalt, pouring the concrete, uh, and waiting for all that to come together. So the quick build concept would say, you know what, we're not gonna go and saw cut the asphalt and pour new concrete, but we're gonna put some paint out there and some white delineators. And it will be quick or faster. Still quick from a engineering perspective, it still might take a bit, but, uh, it's more these durable materials to get us to that solution faster. And then maybe the city can work on a capital improvement project that pours concrete and makes it happen in the long term. Uh, so the quick build idea could, I use the example of the, um, curb extensions, but it could also be employed for bikeway projects as well. So being able to test things like what's shown on the screen, uh, or other bike boulevard projects could be done and as a mechanism to really test out an idea without having to spend all the money for full construction. So we've seen, seen some cities, for example, say, we're gonna test out a traffic circle in a residential area to better accommodate both bike impaired travel and to help with traffic calming. But it's just those, uh, plastic delineators. It doesn't look amazing. I'll give you that. But it does deliver a quick build solution and it can also be a test. And you find out how we like it or don't.
Right. And I think that that's a good approach because that also gives you the opportunity to potentially help normalize the behavior that goes into whatever that project is gonna help, uh, facilitate. So, uh, that's more comment than question, but thank you.
Okay, great.
Any further questions? I have a clarification. It's been bugging me. So you have number two, Washington Street, Eighth Street, L Street. So Washington Street and Eighth Street run parallel to each other and L Street is horizontal. So I'm curious how, and they're not near each other. So how is that a corridor? And also Hawthorne and Humboldt? They're not.
There's a bit of a zigzag. So yes, sometimes, uh, definitely Washington and Eighth are parallel points, but we have a zigzag as you go from west to east. It's Washington. And then at a certain point jogs up Eighth and continues all the way to the east in the couplet area. And then we threw in L Street just to test everyone. So you've, you've caught us there. But the idea with, uh, L Street is really just that we can have that connectivity into the downtown. Uh, they just all lent themselves as that connectivity that goes east-west as well as a spur going north. And then the Hawthorne, um, what is it? Uh, Humboldt and Hawthorne, they zigzag a little bit there, but it provides that east-west connectivity in the same way.
And then another thing, just on the fast build. So the fast builds are cheap and ugly. Is that what I'm hearing? I mean, just, I mean, just being frank.
It, I would tell council, if residents came and complained, you go, all right, well, we're testing it out. We wanted to deliver it faster. We, if you like it, then we'll make it permanent and it'll look better. Yeah. So your words are definitely accurate. As an engineer, I'm trying to, I'll put, try and put a good spin on it as much as I can.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Keep that, keep that slide up, please. Um, I, yeah, I had a similar question about, so up in that little north quadrant area, uh, where 14th is at. So is that also a, a jog that's going over to 15th? Like, I, I was just curious what, why 14th is, you know, whatever that is, three and a half, four blocks long?
Yeah, there's a, um, there's a change in right-of-way width as you come up on 14th heading, uh, west towards 15th and then dropping down to 15th. That's really a much lower, um, volume road as far as vehicles go. So it kind of gives that lower level of traffic stress switching from where you have room on the, on the roadway for facilities like, uh, class two bike lanes and then switching over maybe down to, um, you know, where you have a, an on-street bike boulevard.
Okay. And then is it stopping at about C Street? Is that what that looks like? I just, that's where I live. So coming this way, it looks like it stops at C on 15.
Yeah, that's correct. And.
And then just what happens there? Is that because it's gonna link up with that bike boulevard?
Yeah, C Street Bike Boulevard runs the length of C Street all the way from waterfront down to Harris. So that would be basically aligning with that and allowing to have that connectivity, you know, of a, a full north-south route.
What's the wayfinding or whatever that's gonna let people know that they're supposed to be jogging over and that they're gonna be able to find and connect up? Did, and I'm sorry if you covered that and I, okay.
I didn't. Yeah, the, good question. There's, there's a lot that goes into it, but yes, something like wayfinding. So as a cyclist, how do I know a route provides a connectivity? Usually we do that just through signs and some striping. So on the ground, you could put some paint down and it could be small and unobtrusive, but enough that a cyclist knows to look for different features.
But it wouldn't be like a bike lane per se that would be connecting those two things. It would just be more like something that indicates, go ahead and head this way. You'll be able to pick back up.
Yes.
I see. Um, and then I had, if I can remember, I had one last, oh, uh, back to the not cheap build. What was it called? Quick build?
Quick build.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So back to the, uh, quick build. Um, so is it always done with the intent that you have to, you know, later on follow up with the more expensive, better looking stuff? Or do some people just go ahead and do quick build and be like, hey, there we go?
Yes, to both. Uh, some agencies, it's a lot of, well, let's test it out and we'll see. And if the community is okay with whatever the quick build features are, they could stay. So they could be durable enough. They could be replaced as needed, but it could totally stay. And if the community wants to spend the money to do something more permanent or modify maybe for aesthetics, then they could too.
Our armadillos and then what are the things, uh, the ones down at the golf course that everybody hates? Are they bullards? Bullocks? Delineators? Okay. So are those considered quick build or those considered whatever?
It's, it's, uh, in some communities, they might use that more as a quick build treatment, uh, but others it's been totally permanent. So it, it does go both ways really.
Yeah, I was just curious because I think they look bad, but I wasn't sure if those were considered. Um, and yeah, they've been a swimming success.
I mean, I'm not the expert here, but it seems like when, uh, Paul, Paul was talking about the roundabout. You know, I could see a roundabout with delineators definitely being a quick build, but I think the, the intent of us for the delineator.
Using delineators for a roundabout?
Yeah, that's what he was referring to.
Or a traffic circle, but.
Yeah. So rather than bringing in concrete and having to saw cut to everything, like he was saying, you just put in the delineators and that becomes your roundabout. I would consider that to be more of a quick build, but we've done, and when I've seen in other communities is those delineators have been permanent and not intended to be a quick build because the only alternative to that would be building a wall or putting in K rails or something that may not even would be probably less aesthetically pleasing.
Just to clarify, I think there's a lot of, we're talking a lot in generalities about things versus specifics. And there is a lot that goes into maybe we're not gonna do a quick build for every instance. And when Paul's talking about a traffic circle, that's different than a roundabout. A traffic circle is something, you know, in the middle of like a residential na, uh, intersection that's small and still allows vehicles to go around it, but it slows traffic down. It's not a full.
Thank you for clarifying because I was suddenly picturing this as an alternative to a roundabout. And I was like, okay.
Yeah, no, very much depends on the situation with each one of these, you know, how a quick build might be, might work versus not work.
For being able to tell where my mind had gone and, and, uh, helping me correct that back to where I needed to be. Thanks.
It's a lot of terms of art tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Castellano?
Thank you. Um, I do wanna appreciate your, uh, community meeting facilitation. I attended one of them and I think you did a really great job of, you know, really solidifying input from a wide, uh, variety of perspectives and community members. So thank you for that. Let's see, just a couple of questions. Uh, some of it's in terms of just implementation and updating. Like what, kind of what are the time periods we're looking at for, you know, maybe doing some more long-lasting and some quick build options? And then, you know, and then reflecting on how it's working and then updating it?
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, I think, you know, we haven't represented here as far as the plan goes, like some of the things we have coming right now, like Beta Zoo Trail, um, C Street Bike Boulevard, some things that we already have funding for that are moving forward. Um, so those are coming in the more, the much more near future. Um, some of these alternatives are going to require that we, you know, put together, um, you know, more details in, into what they are. Um, and then, um, you know, vet those out and then put together an application, you know, find a funding source that fits the need. Oftentimes it's active transportation program that really, is a catch-all program for projects like this. And you mentioned, you know, how often does it get updated? And, um, to me, it seems like we're somewhere in the three to five year range, but we don't have a date. Uh, we don't have like a period set. We have other plans. Um, our stormwater resource plan, we bring that back every, I think it's two to three years. This one, you know, I feel like we need to have some, you know, we'd have to implement some things, see some changes in order to kind of influence, you know, my, what might, you know, be a good time to update a plan, but I see it kind of in that probably five-year or less range.
Thank you. And then I, you know, I really understand the, you know, kind of the art of like, how can we get the most out of this plan and also, you know, create the most opportunity for biking and, you know, hopefully, also yield the most enthusiasm from the community, right? Um, and so just kind of curious, you know, I know that every city has very different kinds of bike plans, but in terms of this plan, you know, let's say we adopt all of these things, like what would be the, the sort of, you know, anticipated use increase? And I, I know that's sort of a maybe imaginative space, but you know, in terms, you know, because I think for us, we're weighing, you know, okay, we could implement uh, more, you know, like more protected bike lanes and more people would use them, right? You know, I mean, that's kind of proven just the more protected the bike lanes are, the more use they get. You know, and here we're trying to kind of grow our biking community. So I guess just like, what is the process for growing the biking community? What's the anticipated use over time? And then how might the updating process kind of reflect like feedback around that?
I'll start and then let Paul have a shot at it, but I think, um, to anticipate ridership is challenging, I think. I think, you know, we have a lot of things happen regionally, especially the, the Bay Trail is, you know, under construction right now. And that's gonna be a connection between Arcata and Eureka, which will, you know, be a very, very, uh, visible, you know, indication of increase in ridership, at least, you know, kind of on the waterfront. You know, I think as these facilities, people get more comfortable using them. I think you'll likely see ridership increase and as more, um, connected networks that people can actually find ways to get to places they want to go more safely on a bike. I think that will help increase ridership, but how that, that rate of increase is, I think, difficult to say. Maybe Paul has a little more, um, insight into that.
It is, it is a tough one actually. So a lot of transportation professionals do a lot of traffic modeling for car volumes. But the industry is not as far along on the bicycle network predictions and forecasting. Uh, the goal is that you create a, a network. What's on the screen also is just some of the roadways. So I would highlight that. But the more that a network is built throughout the community, then you do have that greater, um, blanket opportunity for people to travel. To the high school, to the library, to the, the downtown, uh, with different routes, not just, I have my one route that I take. As you build out this entirety of the network that you can get a lot more bang for the buck. And I guess, um, I didn't talk so much, but I would highlight our excitement in seeing the, the, the Bay Trail and the, um, Beta Zoo Trail coming to to fruition in the community, really. and the, um, Beta Zoo Trail coming to fruition in the community, really our amazing backbone network, uh, bikeways within the community. Uh, you guys should be proud of it. I would really suggest that you take some credit is, what a lot of other cities would be jealous of, frankly. So keep that in mind and the connectivity. And the opportunities to be able to bicycle throughout the community are really great with, as I talk about this grid network. Um, it's a relatively small geography, uh, that I could see a lot more bicycling activity. We didn't try and do a forecast, but certainly a lot more volume of activity as this network comes about.
And I think one, to, one last answer to your question, um, is, uh, you know, at HCOG, we're currently, um, purchasing a couple of Myo Vision cameras, which will really help us, um, you know, as a member agency, we'll be able to borrow those and use them to try to do, you know, do traffic counts for, not only veh- um, vehicular turning movements or volumes where they're running over tubes, which when a cyclist hits that, it's harder to pick that up. This will allow you to get a better feel for not only, um, bikes, but also pedestrians and how they're using intersections or roadways. So that, that'll be an opportunity we'll have in the come, in the near future to be able to help inform decisions.
Thank you. Sorry, one last question, but it's a follow-up question. In terms of, you know, the, the kind of planning on the update and things like that, like how much of this do you think will be accomplished within the first, you know, three to five years?
Well, um, you know, when it comes to some quick build opportunities, there might be some things that we could get on the ground, um, and some, you know, you know, as we talk through this, there are a few spots, it's like, oh, we could try this here, try this here. So I think those are likely to be more readily available here in the near, in the, in next few years versus saying, hey, we wanna, you know, package together, um, a series of these, um, corridors that we talked about. One or, or more into a package and put them into a grant application that may take, you know, a long time to, you know, get through the application process. Hopefully we're successful the first time and it, it doesn't run into multiple applications. But, you know, that could be, you know, at the, you know, past the five-year mark that you mentioned.
Sorry. So in your presentation, let's get this again, right? Um, you'd mentioned bike and ped bridges, but then you didn't re, you didn't talk about it any further. And I said, I, there are three places I can think of, just, you know, near Broadway for people, um, that would be great places. Is that something that is even involved in this planning for our city? And what would that look like?
Yes, it is. I apologize. We didn't have a slide on it, but, uh, in the body of the report, we did have a, a map that has some suggested locations for bridge structures. So they might be over Broadway. Or as I mentioned, over more natural landforms like the gulches or some of the canyon areas, the slews. So, um, it's not quite, you know, precise or scalpel precision location. Sometimes it's in this area, uh, but we've seen that in some other communities where they've got some sort of natural barrier or a, a natural landform where some sort of bridge structure would make sense. When we did the community engagement, we did ask for the public to provide input. So again, that's an informed item from the community that is, uh, shown in the report.
Okay. So was Broadway at Harris one of those locations? Just curious.
Yes, I wanna say on the west side by the, the, the park over there, the state park, over where the fort is in that neck of the woods. Yeah, McCollum's and in that area.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any further questions? Councilmember Bauer.
Uh, sorry to inundate you guys. Um, the last map you had up, you don't have to, yeah, there you go. Um, I personally have a problem getting across west to get to Tide, to get to the Bay Trail. So everybody from Fourteenth Street, south between west and let's just say, uh, oh. I mean, maybe I can't see it, but is, is there a plan to connect, you know, west or it's just, there's no safe travel to get across to Tide and, and to the connection. Is, is that there?
So come, I think what you're, okay, so that is, what we show on here, and it's difficult to see, is more of a connection along, um, Sixth Street that would go all the way, um, across, you know, beyond Sixth Street and then eventually connect down to the waterfront trail behind Shoreline RV. And I don't think that's exactly what you're speaking to.
No, I'm talking about by CVS, you know, West and, and, and Myrtle. That intersection is just not conducive to biking to get to the trail.
Yeah, no, that intersection is one that we've, um, that we've been looking at and are continuing to look at. Um, we didn't look at it as far as like a corridor here, but you're, you're definitely right. That intersection is a problem when it comes to bike facilities. Um, in our improvements that we have for the Myrtle Corridor coming up in the next couple of years, we do intend to do some, some light, um, kind of delineation of where cyclists would be in that intersection. So it's not what I think it should be in the long run as far as like a more, um, a better operating intersection and one that's safer for, you know, all modes to, to get through. Um, so it's definitely on the list. It's not really rep. That intersection in particular isn't represented here though.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
For answering all our questions. And we will now open it up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Come on up. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Bruce Silve. I'm here for the Humboldt Trails Council. And, um, we just wanted to say we're very impressed with the plan and we like lots of it. Um, especially appreciated that the red, that the Great Redwood Trail gap was actually identified on the plan. And it is twenty-two blocks, one point nine miles between C Street and Y Street along First. Waterfront Drive, depending on how you talk about it. So, um, we just would like to address something that we think the council could weigh in on, which is the prioritization. And then the prioritization in the bike plan, the last, the last one we saw was those addressing that gap in that trail with the new Bay Trail being completed is down at thirteen or fourteen. So it's very low priority and we think it's gonna be a high priority. Because when, we've all worked, um, probably hundreds of us around the county have worked for twenty years to get this trail from Eureka to Arcata. And it's gonna basically come into, and the people who use trails are looking for a protected bikeway, usually class one. And the Great Redwood Trail Plan, which has right of way down First Street when the tracks are in the middle of the street and then goes off at, uh, I Street and the grass, thank heavens. So, um, that area, they call for in their master plan to have a class one in an urban area trail through there. So we know that the parking on First Street is a major problem and we're hoping that create, the city can get creative about fixing that. And maybe GRTA can help you with that. But we just think that when this city puts their mind to making trails, like they did through Palco Marsh, things get done. It's amazing how efficient the city has been at building great trails. So we just think that if we could get the priority of the Great Redwood Trail up, it would be great. When, when Arcata finishes there as to their, um, northeast corner at Corblex and they had a little bit longer to get to the, um, the water pump station, which is gonna be the start until it gets out to Blue Lake. And right now, uh, Trail Council's working with, um, the group that's advising about getting to College of the Redwoods. There'll be twenty-one miles of trail linking all these areas except for the gap in this Great Redwood Trail. So our ask is that the board consider moving the priority of the Great Redwood Trail through Old Town and the waterfront library district, up from the bottom of the pile, more towards the top of the pile since it'll be very soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. Hello, nice to see you. Welcome.
Sorry, it takes me a bit to get here. Um, my name is, uh, Phyllis Coy and I was in a heavily populated area for about three months. And they had, um, I think something similar to what you're calling the boulevard. And they had issues with cars driving on those boulevards. So if you're gonna install boulevards, you need to put something either, well, at the beginning and the end, of course, but anywhere where a regular street crosses, you need to put something so car, to prevent cars from using the boulevard as a, um, shortcut to get from point A to point B. Um, also, um, you might consider, uh, I know the city can't do it, but licensing bikes so they can help offset the costs of installing these bike, um, lanes. And then, and if you're unable to obtain grants, where you have to consider where you're gonna get the funding from. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
Thank you on comments on my sister Holly. That's it. I agree with my sister Phyllis about taxing bicycles. I pay taxes to drive my vehicle on roads. There comes out of my registration fees, I believe. Um, the bike lanes, um, on the, on H and I Streets, there are bike lanes and then if I wanna make a right-hand turn, what used to be the center lane is now the right lane. So according to the, uh, DMV restrictions, you're supposed to be closest to the curb when you're gonna make a right-hand turn. But is that mean I, that I get into the bike lane to make the right-hand turn? Or do I make it from the old center lane now, crossing the bike lane? That's my question. I hate the curb extensions. And there are places in Eureka that have been, they have been put that has, is not conducive to bikes, to a car making a turn at that intersection, specifically at Seventh and H. I believe you cannot make a right-hand turn on to, um, to that, that, there is no car that we can pass that. Make a turn legally there at least one of those corners. And I would like to see, unlike on Wabash, there are stop signs and there's a stop sign on both sides of the street, of the sign. So when you're going west on Wabash, you see the stop sign that's on the left-hand side. This has a stop sign back to back. Drop back, get one me. Anyway, that one. And are bikers required to use bicycle lanes? Um, because I've been driving down and there's a bicycle lane available on the right-hand side, but there's bicycles using the left-hand lane of traffic. Another one. And are the EPDs going to have increased bicycle officers? And that's my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. My name's Rick Knapp. I'm the president of the Humboldt Bay Bicycle Commuters Association. And we were happily involved in the development of the plan. So we had opportunities to provide input. Uh, I think the final draft's an impressive document. However, you know, the real meat of the document is in the appendix. And none of us saw, I don't know if anybody saw the appendix before September twelfth. I saw it on the thirteenth because it was sent out by the city on the, on the twelfth, the close of business. The current bike lanes in the city, we were, uh, our organization was responsible for developing the first city bike plan and, and helped the city with the, with the grant application that got all of those bike lanes striped for, in one grant. Embarrassed to say, it only cost fifty thousand dollars. But those, those facilities are on arterial roadways. Those are the roads that connect the major, uh, employment centers and population centers and are the ones that we could, we could fit bike lanes on. So you'll see there aren't any on, uh, North Broadway. So, um, the current, the, the plan identifies, as you've discussed tonight, there's eighteen corridors. Eleven of these are new corridors never studied before and can, several consist of multiple minor streets, which you were talking about, the jogs and this and that. I haven't read, ridden, uh, hardly any of those as a corridor. I've ridden the streets, you know. The, uh, the idea was that, uh, a lot of bicyclists aren't comfortable riding on arterial streets. So as was pointed out by Paul, that this was gonna provide some kind of an alternative, uh, for those folks. The improvement concepts are in the appendix. I think it adds up to about twenty-two million dollars. I just, uh, you know, I could live with the plan as it is. I know we can make modifications and, you know, and grants and, and identify what we need to, but I just wonder whether it's appropriate for the city to adopt this tonight when nobody really got to see it. So that's kind of an open question to you. Is five days from the time you sent out an email to some people, uh, enough time? I, I don't fully understand the concepts myself. I couldn't comprehensively.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Appreciate you. Do we have anybody else in chambers that'd like to speak on this item? Come on up. Hi, welcome.
Yes, hello. My name's Brett Gronemeyer. I'm the vice president of the Humboldt Bay Bicycle Commuters Association and a resident of Eureka as well as, uh, Rick Knapp is. Yes, I, I was, I would, we did participate on the, um, the task force. And, um, and I did have an opportunity to, to ride my bicycle around the city with Paul Martin and Jay Riddle on a, on a damp Saturday. And, um, and it, I am quite impressed with the, um, with the, uh, this bike plan, the effort that went into it and the public engagement. But like, uh, like Rick mentioned earlier, um, I was able to review the, um, the, uh, report itself as a, as a task force member, but the, um, the appendices weren't available, um, until, you know, I got a chance to look at the appendices, uh, really just on Monday or yesterday. And, uh, so I'm, I'm not quite sure what exactly the, um, the adoption of the plan tonight means. If it's, if we're adopting the plan as, and that's, that's, it's final. Because if that's the case, uh, you know, I would like to have the opportunity to, to review those appendices and especially the, uh, you know, the, um, thirty percent, uh, concept plans, you know, and be able to provide comments on those. We have, as, as an organization, we have offered in the past, um, you know, and we still continue to offer our, our expertise, you know, to the, to the, um, city staff, you know, to, um, to help, you know, really, we, we wanna see the, you know, the bike network here in Eureka really, really be a, you know, in a, in a class one, you know, really, you know, a excellent facility. And, and, you know, and it is, what we've done so far, you know, is, is, you know, you know, something that I am, I'm, you know, somewhat proud of, you know, as a member, as a resident of the city. And I definitely appreciate, you know, the bicycle facilities we have here. I would just, just like to have a little more of an opportunity to review those, uh, appendices and, um, before this is adopted. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm looking at, is there anyone else here in chambers that would like to comment on this item? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move it over to Zoom, which I cannot see. Can you see Shannon? Colin? Thank you.
Good evening again. Uh, Colin Fisk with CRTP. And, uh, you know, we were also, uh, on the task force and there was other stakeholders. Really appreciate, um, all the effort that went into this and, um, you know, it, it's great that the city is, is doing a comprehensive look at bike infrastructure and trying to develop networks. That being said, we do have some significant overarching concerns about the approach. Um, and particularly the, the heavy reliance on bike boulevards. You know, bike boulevards, uh, can be great, uh, if they are well-designed and, and meet appropriate standards. But they're really only one element of, uh, a complete functional, safe bike network. So, you know, we are asking for, um, I guess four different things. One is that you ensure. One is that you ensure that bike boulevards meet minimum standards that actually limit traffic volumes by, by diverting vehicles, and also limit speeds with active measures because they really can't be safe and comfortable for most bicyclists without those measures. The other thing is to commit to significantly more safety improvements for bikes on major streets. The major streets are, as, as you heard earlier, the most direct way across town, the important ways to access destinations, often the only way, and also frankly, the most dangerous places where bicyclists are most likely to get hurt or killed. And so we can't pass up making significant safety improvements on the major streets, including many improvements that are not in this, this current plan. Finally, really appreciate the discussion about quick build. And we would ask that the council commit to a quick build approach to, for, you know, all of the projects where that is feasible so that we don't have to wait years or decades to see, you know, a few, a few bike facilities built. And then I also want to highlight the importance of non-infrastructure policies. And this was in one of those appendices that was mentioned. But it really is important to update policies and not just infrastructure. One that we encourage you to pursue is a no right on red policy. This has really proven to improve bike and pedestrian safety, and also fully implementing speed limit reductions to the extent allowed by recent improvements in state law. And encourage you to look at other non-infrastructure policies, like transportation demand management programs that support more biking as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin. Philip?
Thank you. The city bike plan is a huge improvement. Thanks so much to staff and contributors, paid and unpaid, for their effort. Thanks also to council for these realized steps toward the general plan. The recent improvements we've seen, HI bulb outs, are a huge improvement. They're no problem to drive around. Drivers overall seem to be driving with more awareness. I've also seen grown men riding with groceries on the handlebars in the new lanes on H and I. It's clear to me that these lanes are meeting a need that was before now unmet. I also see the same folks swerving in between the parked cars for additional protection. So, thank you for the bike plan. The task force member concern about the contents of the full report are appropriate, and I would think warrant review. I think quick build is great. I did attend a meeting or two, and I've, I've noticed a, a programmatic interest in avoiding certain modalities that are common within the American framework of adding bicycle safety to cities. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Philip.
I see no one else on Zoom.
Great, so seeing no one else, last chance for the audience. Okay, seeing no one, we'll bring it back to council for questions, I mean, for comments and a motion. Councilmember Moulton.
Right. I do have a few comments, some things, just looking through the report, looking through the plan, some things that I wanted to highlight, some, a few things really stuck out to me. One is that between 2017 and 2021, there were 123 bike collisions in Eureka. This is a small city. Four of those were fatal. In just four years, we had four cyclists hit by a car and killed. One is too many. I think when we talk about this, we talk about reducing emissions, we talk about walkability, we talk about quality of life, but we're also talking about the safety of people on bicycles and pedestrians. I also wanted to highlight how the, how the different parts of the plan are prioritized. There's a great chart here on page 79, if you're following along, where the priorities for each different set of improvements were calculated, given a score for traffic stress, so how bad the situation is right now, feedback from the community, so how important this was to the people who were participating in all that wonderful public engagement. The ease of implementation, so is it doable? Can it be made fast? Can it be done, or can it be funded? And the potential bike trips that could be served. So will people actually use this improvement if we do it? And the crash history, so how dangerous is that route right now? And equity. And I love to see equity in there because access to vehicles is not equal across the community, but access to our public spaces and our public right of ways should be equal across the community. And I think that adding all of these things up, especially, you know, people actually using it, you know, if we make a, a bike facility that we want to see bikes on there, I think that approaching the prioritization in that way is going to help build support because this is something that is new, something relatively new. And there's, you know, change is hard. So I just wanted to commend that approach and to highlight that to folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, well, we need a motion to continue this conversation. Is there anyone here willing to make a motion this evening?
There's a sample motion I can make. Shall I make staff, move staff recommendation? Yeah, let's adopt this.
Second.
Thank you.
We have a motion in a second. Any further comments? Councilmember Castellano.
I do think, I mean, I, for folks who haven't had a chance to review this, I just want to let folks know. It's a 518-page document, so. And so thank you to members of the public who have spent so much time with it. And I am sensitive to the request for more time, just acknowledging that folks have spent a lot of time with it. You know, I do think, I, and I appreciate Councilmember Moulton for lifting up the prioritize, prioritization metrics. I think those are really valuable and well-spoken. You know, I would like to echo an interest, especially in safety improvements across major streets, you know, and, and the quick build approach. And especially like, let's try out a couple of bike boulevards, you know, and kind of see how they do and promote them, and, you know, and, and I think, because it's, it will be newer for our community to see how those are, are implemented. You know, and especially I think that may adjust some of the cost expectations there in the appendix. I do, I don't know, I'm just kind of wrestling with, like, adopting this so we can move it forward and start working on it, or, you know, giving more time for the appendices. Yeah, just thinking about that right now.
Councilmember Conchera Stilich.
Yeah, I, I think echoing some of the public comments and then also what Councilmember Castellano just said. I, you know, I, I think in the grand scheme, giving it a little bit more time for people to look at the appendices and for all of us to kind of look at things isn't, isn't a bad thing. I think that would be helpful and beneficial.
Councilmember Bauer.
No, I appreciate both your comments on that. You know, an interest in transparency. And I, I know we've done a lot of outreach, and I understand, you know, it is a 518-page document, and that should speak to the need to, to, to take deep consideration. But at the same time, you know, moving it forward is, is a great thing. I mean, it's hard, right? We want to like, let's get this going. You know, we're trying to balance the needs of, of both, both, you know, vehicles, people using vehicles and people using bikes. And it's time that there's a balance there. And I, and I hope we all appreciate people want to use other modes of transportation than vehicles. And, and this isn't going to upset that, it's just going to allow for a shared use of the roads, right? You know, it's a living document, right? I mean, I think when Myrtle came before us, we made changes that, you know, didn't please everybody. And I guess, you know, so this will come before us in multitude of fashions, whether it be when we're doing road rehabilitation or, or we're getting grants. And so I am torn about giving another couple of weeks. So I'm, I'm interested to hear some other opinions. I know we, we all, we all have them. And I think, thank you, Jesse. Thank you, Paul, Paul Wright, Paul Mark. And thanks to everybody who participated because it's finally something that I think we all, we all desire, a lot of us. And it'll be great, whether it be now or in two weeks. Thanks.
Councilmember Fernandez.
I, I personally don't see the harm in moving this forward. I, I am curious, though, from staff, if there is any deleterious effect if we postpone this to give the community another two weeks to at least review the 500-page document, if there's anything that we're unaware of.
There's not like pending grant funding or anything like that. I will say that, as Councilmember Bauer mentioned, it is a dynamic document when these projects do come back. Not only will be an opportunity then, but there'll also be an opportunity prior to those happening to make changes to this document whenever there's either a quest from council or a staff recommendation. As City Engineer Willer stated, you know, a lot of this is going to change anyway. If we have, you know, CHP doesn't go into Jacobs, and it turns out to be a multifamily residential thing that could change and could be brought back to council because of that. A lot of things could change just based on development or lack of development. And there'll always be opportunities to make changes to.
So I can say I'm comfortable moving forward with a yes vote on this because, again, as has been pointed out, at least by staff, and as it's been said here from the dais, is that this is going to be coming back to us in a multitude of fashions. So there's going to be ample opportunity for folks to participate in the discourse and any concerns that they might have with this moving forward.
Councilmember Castellano.
Yeah, I, I can see that. And in terms of the motion, I'm wondering if, if we need to make kind of a, a friendly amendment in terms of, you know, kind of prioritizing quick build, when feasible, focusing on kind of trying out some bike boulevards and, you know, more safety improvements on major streets? Or is that kind of just inherent? And should I go ahead and friendly amend that motion?
City Attorney Luna?
I don't personally think it's necessary. I think that you can, you know, give that direction without it having to necessarily go into an amendment in the document itself. And therefore, an amendment to the motion isn't necessary. In, in my mind, at this point.
Okay. So with that, please vote.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Thank you. And now we will take a, an eight-minute break. So we'll see you at 8:35. Going to be looking at, there she is. See, I stalled. The Eureka Operations Complex project with special proj, special projects manager Marcelon. Thanks for being here.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Katie Marcelon, and I'm a project manager with our Public Works Department. And if there are other questions I can't answer, we have our Public Works Director Brian Gerving with us. So I'm going to run through a series of slides that address the agenda item, and we'll get going. Hopefully it will, there we go. Okay, so we have a longstanding goal to relocate our Public Works Corporation yard. The vision for this new Eureka Operations Complex would be, the facility would serve as our new corporation yard and function as the emergency operations center during critical, critical incidents and natural disasters. You've taken action on this project back in November of 2023, when we moved forward with acquisition of property at Ocean View Cemetery, and at that time also adopting the initial study mitigated negative declaration. At that same time, you authorized staff to take a few next steps. Those included entering a schematic design phase, identifying the project budget, and then facilitating a procurement process for a construction manager at risk. Tonight, we're requesting action in awarding that contract for a construction manager at risk. So I am going to do some background, so we're all familiar again. Here's our project site, 3993 Broadway, off Highway 1, excuse me, 101, right behind the Pacific Motorsports, in an Upland location outside of the coastal zone and other hazard areas. And again, we moved forward with that acquisition approval, and we closed escrow. After meeting all of the terms of the purchase and sale agreement, we closed in May. To get us to that point, there was a concept planning phase. And that concept phase is really the ideas, the, looking at the use of space, how are we going to use the space? And then connecting that with those technical studies or sequent studies. So the outcome of that was a proposed build of 4.8 acres with the presentation back in November, including three main buildings. So we had a fleet building, and then also a warehouse building that would serve more of our utilities and streets crews, and then an operations facility that would serve crew spaces and potentially additional administrative offices. So that was kind of this big process of concept design. We also presented to you at that time that there were many steps that need to happen next. We would need to go through procurement, the SD phase, budgeting to get us to final design, and some sort of contract award and construction. So I'm going to do a little reminder on those. The procurement steps that we often see with capital projects are a traditional hard bid approach, where we do the design, we put it out to bid, we award it to the lowest responsive bidder. In that scenario, we don't have the opportunity to engage with contractors because that would give them prior knowledge before bidding. So we can't talk to them about construction methods or materials. We also cannot evaluate based on their past experience or projects that they've completed. We were proposing for this, and you gave us authority to move forward, a different delivery method. It's a construction manager at risk. And so in this scenario, there's a request for qualifications and proposals. Those firms or contractors would propose to us. We would evaluate what they've done before, what are they capable of doing? We would interview and select that firm. And then we engage with them during the design phases through that pre-construction role. And we reached a full package of design documents, and they proposed to us a guaranteed maximum price. And that's where the at-risk portion comes in, that they carry the financial liability to deliver the project for a full max price. So this is the procurement that we set out to get for this project. Benefits include reducing the delivery time, enhancing the design quality, greater cost certainty, fewer change orders, fewer claims, and lower project cost. The other sequence and planning component is that schematic design phase. So upon moving into this next stage between November and April, we moved, this, this pretty picture changed slightly. But what we need to do is take the ideas of space and use of space at the parcel and think about it more 3D. What was that civil design going to look like? How much rough grading? How are we going to change the topography? What were those underground utilities? Where were they going? Where were they going to fit our stormwater design? The structural engineering for the buildings, what, you know, levels, how many levels? What type of framing? What are the costs that drive that? The electrical engineered design to get our new PG&E service? And then thinking about this site, as we sits right now, is a grassy spot. We need to make those utility connections down to existing service for water, wastewater. What are we meter sizing? How are we making those connections? So it's this whole modeling. And then each of the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing system, early designs, because those can be high-cost items. So again, just kind of pulling all this together, that's what hits our 50% schematic design phase. And in this picture, you're seeing one larger building and one smaller building. So the outcome was the fleet shop, really, in terms of the orientation and the circulation of the site has stayed approximately the same size. It made more sense to combine potentially those two smaller buildings that we were showing. This is a 3D rendering of that design outcome. And we reduced from three buildings to two to reduce the total project cost, combining the warehouse and crew operations area together, streamlining everything down to all metal buildings, not a mix of different building styles. And then potentially showing positioning of buildings in an east-west orientation. So they could get smaller, shrink down for project cost, or they could grow, or we could build them in stages or phases. Or someone in my position in the future would have the ability. We could grow these things in the future. We get into our next component of sequence and planning, our project budgeting. So early on, we knew that this was a large capital project for Eureka to undertake. There are other projects in our facilities master plan. We have explored financing options, and I have been told I have a budget, and it is $21 million for this project. With that dollar amount, it would allow a little bit of funds above that dollar amount that could be used towards other city projects that are very critical. It could be City Hall, it could be other kind of deferred maintenance projects that we need to be able to have financing available for. So knowing that, we're generally, we're kind of zeroing in, right, on this next design phase and getting us into a project mode. We would be looking at approximately $7 million towards site development, $11 million in buildings, and then $3 million for all of the related work that goes into this pre-construction design, utility connection fees, construction administration. So this is, these are smaller numbers, but this is, we have to know what we're targeting, right? Where are we headed? The reason that I reviewed those three components with you is that we needed all of those pieces to be able to do an accurate and, you know, a well-rounded solicitation process. So we took all of that information, the 50% schematic design, and we advertised that out to construction management firms and contractors who might be interested in this work. We received those statement of qualifications back, evaluated those, looked at, you know, all the variety of different projects that these different companies have completed. And then knowing the now budget target, we also took that same information and submitted to those firms a request for proposals. And then they submitted back to us a technical proposal and proposed fees. So now we've been able to talk about, like, what is the scope? What is the scale? What is our schedule? You know, they were actually able to engage with us and get to a more robust kind of procurement process. The deliverables that this potential firm would have, based on the RFQ and RFP process, would be a two-part pre-construction steps. So we would be entering pre-construction for the site development work, and then they would potentially propose that guaranteed maximum price for construction to occur as early as the summer of 2025. So we're trying to hit the dry season. And then we would be concurrently working on that pre-construction design for all those upright buildings, and that work would occur later in 2026. So all this information went into that solicitation. And that's part of why we're bringing this forward for award tonight. Pre-construction of Phase One, we have grading underground utilities and building foundations. Those would be, again, we want to hit the dry season, have that site controlled before we're going into the winter months. The Phase Two work would be more of our buildings and complete project. So then we're doing finished buildings, auxiliary structures, hardscape, fencing, security, lighting, landscape, getting us ready for occupancy. The specific tasks or work that's part of this pre-construction mode from the construction manager at risk is engaging with us on how we have an architect and we have us, the owners, but what can we afford to construct? And what does it look like for us to build this? So it's the design coordination review. They'll be bringing in design assist sub-trades to engage with us on the mechanical design or the wastewater connection, whatever it might be that are questions that need to be answered, that we're getting those out early during design. Cost trending, project logistics in terms of scheduling and phasing, and then cost estimates. So once we reach a 90% construction document set at each pre-construction phase, then they're actually going out and bidding to their sub-trades and their subcontractors, preparing their construction phase staffing plan, and generating a large Schedule of Values or Bid document that then is part of their guaranteed maximum price. So it's their work plus the works of, it might be local subs, it might be other vendors that comes forward to us with the guaranteed maximum price. So that's how we get to our final two arrows to get us towards final design and a GMP contract award. We get through the pre-construction stages. The OAC is the owner, architect, and contractor. So we're working together to get through Phase One. There's a lot of pieces. There's four main sections of Phase One. Then we get to hopefully our GMP, and we return to the City Council for a GMP contract award. Our pre-construction Phase Two for buildings, the same OAC team, the owner, the architect, and the contractor, we're working towards those construction documents, and then we hopefully get to that GMP, and we bring that back to council for award of that dollar value as well. So our next steps in front of us today are awarding to Swinburne Builders. They've gone through that RFQ and RFP evaluation process, appropriating funds so that we can go into this next stage of work, $378,000 to Swinburne and $142,000 for Scott Edwards. And then at a future date, you will likely hear from staff on the more finite details on a financing faction or, excuse me, package. Or if we have any other professional services that we can't handle within our existing on-call agreements, we may return to City Council. Here we are. Questions?
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Bauer.
Great presentation, Katie. Quick question on a couple of questions. Do we tell them ahead of time, like, I would hope we're going to try and do a LEED-certified building? I don't know how much it adds to the cost, but thinking of future costs for the city, you know, a well-insulated, energy-efficient building will save us money in the long run. Do we tell them, maybe we want solar on top, or is that on the rooftop solar? Are those things that we're adding in immediately?
So that analysis was part of the 50% schematic design, and I went through a very quick list. It's a much larger involved kind of set of design documents and a basis of design narrative. So that mechanical and electrical design really hits on solar photovoltaic coverage, all of our EV charging, our electrical capacity. So all of that has been built in now. And it's based on the structures and the rooftop capacity and the orientation of the building. So there was some, a lot of thought in how we would arrange the site to make, to give us that long-lasting kind of energy return as well.
Awesome. Thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Moulton?
I just had, I had a question. Forgive me if you've covered this before, but looking at the map, do both of the exits drop down into the tsunami zone? Okay, the one entrance from the side where the entrance splits off from Ocean View comes up from Broadway, and I saw there's another exit back there, but I'm not sure where that goes to. Does that go uphill, or does that also drop down into the tsunami zone?
So when we, I don't have the slide with me today, but when we we do have a slide, and it shows the tsunami zone related to Highway 101 at this particular location. And I think there's a greater setback. I think we do have a clear path to get in and out of our site. You're correct that it drops down onto Broadway. And then the other kind of secondary auxiliary emergency access point takes you to Sunset and then back down to Broadway as well. But I think when I remember looking at the maps, because we're, well, yeah.
Director Gerving.
There's a tertiary exit. So there is, as a last resort, it's not something that we would use except in emergencies. There's through the cemetery to Allard, stays out of the tsunami zone.
Of course.
And can be, you know, in the event of an emergency, can be used.
Thank you. That was a concern of mine. Appreciate that.
Any other questions? Councilmember Castellano.
Director Gerving or Project Manager Marcelon, could you say a little bit more about the pass through the cemetery? It's like, it's on roads in the cemetery. Am I correct? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. There were like gasps amongst people in the presence. I just wanted to, that that would be clarified for everyone here before they really think the worst of us. Okay, thanks.
I think I went pretty fast on that slide, but if you can visualize where the Pacific Motorsports building is when you're entering the cemetery, and there's a, there's a building, and there's a small parking area, we are immediately just beyond that building. So our property would be right up in that area where there's currently development.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other questions. We'll open this item up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item in chambers? Seeing no one, we will move it to Zoom. Is there anyone on Zoom?
I see no one on Zoom.
Seeing no one on Zoom. Bring it back for a motion and comments. Who would care to make the motion? Councilmember Bauer.
I'll motion to move staff recommendation.
Second.
I motioned a second. Any further comments? Thank you for that clarification. Please vote.
Unanimous yes vote. Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, future agenda items. Councilmember Castellano.
Okay. There, the planning, Public Works Department did write a grant for electric vehicle charging stations that requires a city match. You know, the grant award is substantial, and I know that there's been some, you know, concern around the city match, but I would like to bring it to a meeting for consideration. Done some research on this. I think that there's perhaps opportunities for grant funding or different things that would kind of offset that city match. So I'd like to, yeah, have a meeting so we can consider, especially given the climate action plan that we heard earlier today. I think it would be worth having some public discussion around.
Thumbs up all around. Any further? Councilmember Contra Stolich.
I was wondering if we could have a discussion based off of something that was presented tonight, where Sacramento has smaller allowable lot sizes. I was wondering if that was something that we could request that staff look into for us and maybe bring back as a possible item to explore.
So that would likely come. We do periodic zoning updates, and that's something that we can incorporate into the next zoning code update. I believe the last one we had was three or four months ago. So I would assume prior to the end of the year, there'll be another one. And we can bring it back for that, and I'll have Director Canyon add that to the list.
Thank you.
For consideration, not saying.
Councilmember Bauer.
Yeah, you know, I've been driving around town, and I always see these old dilapidated signs, some of which aren't even being used. And I'd like to look at this sign ordinance and talk about it. And I think there's something to do with grandfather clause. You can't take a sign down or something, but I would like to explore these old ugly signs that are still standing and why we can't get rid of those and beautify the city.
So once again, that's definitely something staff's been considering, especially because of some recent applications that we've had some issues with, both on Harrison-Harrison as well as on Broadway. So that was something that was going to be brought back for consideration for council as a part of those zoning code updates already.
Okay. Well, there you go. Okay, so moving on then to city manager reports.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Just wanted to provide a quick update on the Earth Center and let you know that this hasn't fell by the wayside. We are meeting at a minimum biweekly, but typically weekly, on finalizing kind of the interior of the project. Once again, it'll be a residential project. It'll be four stories. Right now, it's looking to be 55 units of affordable housing. The lower level is going to be, the whole project's going to be condominiumized, and the lower level is going to be owned by Humboldt Transit Authority. And so the majority of the work that we've been doing is making sure that it accommodates their need for a transit hub, as well as the office space and other uses that they want to use on the first floor, and we're coming very close to finalizing that. We've also been looking exhaustively at the drop-off of the buses and what that looks like with the bike lane along H Street between Third and Fourth. Yes, between Third and Fourth, and making sure that that's congruent with our future plans. And so anyway, that's coming to a head and should be going to design review sometime here in the near future. And then the DDA for that project is in progress right now. I'm going back and forth with HTA and Dan Co on working on that. So just wanted to provide an update on that. Thank you.
Just a point of clarification for people who may be watching. Can you just clarify just one more time what affordable housing really is? Is it people with zero income?
No, I'm not going to be exact on this, but I know I'm going to be pretty close. Very low income typically is 30%. Depending on how the funding comes in, if it's tax credits, very low income will be 30% of the area median income. Low income is 60%. I think 2023 data, very low income, which is a 30% area median income, is approximately $27,000 to $28,000 a year in earnings. And 60% is somewhere in the mid-45s. Those are for single folks. Families obviously goes up based on the number of family members that you have. So yes, these are not permanent supportive housing, not transitional housing, not voucher-based housing. There are some percentages that are voucher-based, but the majority of these both link rural communities or center. All of those will be affordable housing that is for, in my opinion, working folks and a large portion of our population. And then we have people that work for the city that have full-time jobs that could qualify for the low-income component.
I appreciate that clarification. I think it's a real important clarification. I think a lot of people get misinformation on that. So again, thank you. Moving on to council reports, we'll start with Councilmember Contra Stolich.
Okay, so I had attended a dockside market meeting over at the harbor, and we were discussing the upcoming, is it Fisherman's Terminal? Is that what they're calling it?
It's kind of a farmer's market, but for commercial fishermen.
It's cool. So I'm super, I've been excited about it since a year and a half ago when Ashley Bellis talked to me about it. So. And then I also attended a CalCities Needle Exchange, statewide Needle Exchange discussion. I think that was yesterday. Councilmember Fernandez was also on that one as well. And a lot of interesting information. And then coming up, I've got, oh, and then I had a phone meeting with that was about an hour and a half long with Maine State Representative Benjamin Collings. He's a part of EOPA, which I'm also a part of. We were talking about offshore wind. So and then I just want to, upcoming, we have Harbor District 2x2 coming up in like a week. And then I just wanted to remind us about a couple of things really quick. There is a fundraiser coming up for Fire Inspector Camonte Cook on that September 26 at 5, and it's something we need to get tickets for, yes, cancer. So this is a fundraiser. There's also a fundraiser for, a fisherman fundraiser for the Mariah Kay. I don't know if you guys remember reading about the boat that exploded, and there were individuals that were burned pretty badly. This was organized by the Commercial Fishermen's Wives of Humboldt, and that is October 5 on Woodley Island from 2 to 6 p.m. So and then September 27th is California Native American Day.
Thank you. Councilmember Bauer.
Yeah, thank you. No travel to report. I attended the Redwood Empire Division, and you were there too, for CalCities, which was great having all of our fellow City Council members from northern coastal Northern California. We had a JPA meeting where we made Tim Citro our We uh, we had a JPA meeting where we um made uh Tim Citro our interim chief. He, he will, he will be our chief, but he's interim until uh Chief Robertson is actually fully retired. And we're happy to have him um take over. I think he's gonna be great for, for um the Fire Department, and he's a great guy. Um, and then I attended a meeting with Chris Rogers, who's running for Assembly uh with a bunch of citizens from uh Eureka. And that was a, a really good discussion about what's going on and, and what um he plans to do if elected. And yeah, lots of meetings coming up in the next couple of weeks. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez?
I was gonna say, uh, attended a roundtable from the uh California League of Cities on Harm Reduction. I believe that was already stated. Uh, this week, I'm attending the National Association for Latino Elected and Appointed Officials. There's a conference in Houston regarding disaster preparedness. And then just, it's been pointed out, it seems that there's a bevy of uh meetings next week with the Redwood Region Development Economic Commission, and then we have our Two by Two with the WIA. So that's everything.
Thank you. Councilmember Molton?
Hi, thank you. Houston, huh? Tell you where the good restaurants are. Uh, let's see, I have no travel to report. Um, I did attend the Eureka City Schools uh Board Meeting, again, as a citizen. Um, they are currently making a decision, they're working. They gave their staff direction to continue negotiating with the CHP to purchase the uh Jacobs Campus. If you have an opinion about that, I know those weeknight meetings can be really difficult to get to. Uh, there's a contact page on their website, and they are checking their emails. And so if you have something to say to them about that, I recommend you email them very soon. Um, I went to Arts Alive, which is always fun, super bustling, great to see out people out and in all the shops in Old Town. I did miss the JPA meeting. I had a fever, and I thought it was best not to go into a room with half the city's first responders. Yeah, I was sad to miss uh Chief Citro's first day as interim chief or to miss that process. I'm, I'm really happy that he's um taking leadership of that department. Um, I wanted to plug the Street Story um that was, came up during the Bike Plan, and this is a really great information gathering uh website made by Berkeley. Uh, so that's streetstory.berkley.edu. And it's basically anything you, it's to report traffic stuff. Um, you see faded paint on the side, or you have a near miss accident. You see one of those uh little safety mat things coming up. You see damage to the street. We have a lot of really great staff, they're always out there, you know, um, working on things, but we can't have eyeballs on every street everywhere. Street Story is a way for, um, it's kind of like citizen science for public works. And then I just wanted to shout out um, streetstory.berkley.edu. Uh, and then I wanted to shout out to the North Coast Stand Down, which is coming up September twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth. Uh, this is a longstanding tradition in the community connecting veterans with resources, especially those experiencing homelessness. If you know a vet who could use a hand up, or even just a connection in the community, um, this is a great event for them. If you'd like to volunteer uh to help out, they're accepting donations. It'll be at the fairgrounds, um, but you can go to northcoaststandown.org to find out more about that.
Clarification, is that Ferndale Fairgrounds or our fairgrounds?
Ferndale Fairgrounds, yeah, because it's a county-wide thing.
Thank you. Councilmember Castellano?
Thank you. Um, I attended the Humboldt Community Services District Two by Two and the, um, currently, well, yes, yesterday, today, and tomorrow, attending the California Main Street uh meeting, which is here in Eureka, and it's, it's a great honor to have folks from all over the state here. Um, I also attended the Cal Cities um Redwood Empire Division meeting on Friday. I just want to lift up uh Councilmember Bauer being um elected as the Regional Representative on the State Board through Cal Cities. Congratulations.
We can clap on this.
Yeah, I think we can. And um also, I found out at that meeting, I um, you know, many of us are on policy committees through Cal Cities, and so I will be the Vice President of the Housing, Community, and Economic Development Policy Committee. Um, so I'm excited about that. I've been involved with that committee for, I don't know, four or five years. Um, and so it'll be an opportunity to think about uh economic development opportunities and housing opportunities at the state level. Sure, people are thrilled that I'm on that committee. Um, and then da, 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 da. That's, I think that's it. I'm, but I do look forward to supporting, um, yeah, just this movement at the state at that level.
It is wonderful to see so many of us engaged in statewide politics. Go ahead.
Sorry, I just wanted, you know, I was thinking earlier, Mayor Buckell, when you were, first, I, I do want to acknowledge Holly uh Klingel and uh just her, you know, she was, has been such a steady force in our community. Um, and just appreciating her engagement. And also, I want to acknowledge you and just the care you bring to your position as mayor. And I just want to appreciate you and your humility and care for the people who, for the public. So thanks for being our mayor.
Thank you. Okay, on that note, we're adjourned. Thank you.